We are going to call this meeting to order at this time. And I would ask that all of you rise as I call Pastor Alex Garcia from the New Life Church for the invocation, as well as, this will be followed, so please remain standing with the pledge of allegiance to both flags.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for your grace today. We thank you for the truth in your word, that your mercies are new every day. Lord, we thank you for the importance of strong leadership in our communities. And so, we come here and we cover our leaders, our judges, our commissioners, Jesus, with your grace and your favor as they take upon the decisions of our cities. Thank you, Lord, for what you are doing in our land, in our state, and in our country. And we just ask that by your grace, you would continue to guide us and give us the wisdom to lead our people correctly, to make the decisions that we need to make. And I pray, Lord, that we would side with you as we choose things that affect our people. This is something that is important to you, Father. We love you. We thank you for the grace again of these days. We ask, Lord, that you would take us into this week and allow us to continue to do the work that you've called us to. We love you. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pastor, that was beautiful, and it always sets the tone for a good meeting and a beautiful day. Today is August 14th, 2019. We are at the Noasis County Courthouse on the third floor, 901 Leopard. For the clerks' purposes, I note that all commissioners are present, and indeed, I'm certifying there is a quorum. I'm going to ask Timothy to do a safety briefing, and then I'm going to take public comment directly after that. And so, if you'd bring that to me at this time, I sure would appreciate it. Yes? The time, 9:07. Thank you. Appreciate that, Edward. Timothy, go ahead.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, ma'am. This is your Noasis County Commissioners Court Safety Brief. We're located, we are located here on the third floor of the Noasis County Courthouse at 901 Leopard Street. For those of you whose first time is here, the restrooms are located on the third floor atrium to your right-hand side as you exit the courtroom. Fire extinguishers are located at the rear of the courtroom. In addition, there are five fire extinguishers located throughout the third-floor atrium. An AED is located on the right wall as you exit the courtroom by the Human Resources Office here on the third floor. Participants responsible for dialing 911 in event of emergency are Tyner and Edward. Participants who are CPR certified in this courtroom are Deputy Vasquez and Margaret Mead. In case of evacuation, egress route will be down the atrium stairs immediately outside the courtroom. Proceed out the double doors located on the pan side of the courthouse and muster across the street in the parking lot. In case the need to shelter in place, will remain in the building and await further instructions from the Noasis County Sheriff's Office. And of course, for this week, our shared safety topics are the upcoming active shooter training scheduled for tomorrow.
And just remind us, tomorrow, the active shooter training is at 9:00 a.m., is that correct?
That is correct, ma'am. We have two. One goes at 9:00 a.m. to 10:30, and the other one goes at 1:00 p.m. till 2:30.
And do we need to sign up?
No, ma'am. It's, we schedule it, there's enough space, and no one has to sign up, just show up. We will have a sign-in roster for everyone, and we'll keep that on electronic file for free reference as well.
That's great. I consider this the utmost importance, of the utmost importance, and I myself will be there at 9:00 a.m. to receive the training. So, I ask all county employees who are listening and can attend to please do so, either at 9:00 a.m. or at 1:00 p.m. Thank you for organizing that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you to the sheriff for recommending the particular trainer. Okay, at this time, I'm going to take public comment, and I understand I have members of the judiciary, so I see that they're signed up, but I don't see them. Could they be in the hallway? They're not here yet. When they do come in, Commissioners, I think I will go back to public comment in the interest of their time and their docket this morning. So, the court calls Mr. Brian Watson. Morning, Mr. Watson.
Good morning.
Welcome.
I'm glad your daughter has done well.
Oh, thank you. Pardon me for that interruption.
My name is Brian Watson. I've been here several times on several issues. I'm not sure what I wanted to mention this morning is in order here, but unless my information is incorrect, there's been some concern about the Commissioners Court position on same-sex activities in Corpus Christi. I would support the Commissioner, who's spoken against that wholeheartedly. I think we need to be very careful about joining the palmyl rush to tolerate anything and everything that comes along. It's a very sad condition. I don't know what gets people interested in it, but it's something I've seen firsthand in Houston and Austin, California. I've been to San Francisco twice, seen all the goofy stuff that goes on out there, and I just, I think we need to be careful about that. So, I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And as you know, in public comment, we make no comment back at this time. Still waiting on the judges. Let's pursue the consent agenda this morning, Commissioners, for your review. We have a request by our procurement director, Michael Robinson. H and J, I'm sorry, J and K, J and K will be pulled for further discussion. Are there any others that you would like to consider?
How about F? We're gonna, you-
F? Okay, let me pull F. Any others?
We got it on the closed session.
As I say, going once? Okay. Hearing no others to be pulled for discussion, I'd like a motion on A through E and G, H, I and L, please.
A motion.
And a second? I heard a motion in a second. And if there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Pose same sign. Michael, actually, I don't know if you're the best person, or Maria, why don't you come on up anyway? Mike, where's Michael? Okay. Let's take, let's wait for him. Is there anyone here from the- Okay, thank you. If, as we wait for Michael, just so we're ready, from the clerk's office, would you, is there anyone that can address? Tyner, would you like to address F in just a moment? F has to do with the Inner Civic Annual Software License and Support. It's a renewal, and it's for the clerk's office?
That's correct.
The Hard Inner Civic for voting machines.
We have to ask you to pull that one, because it's in a tagged session, so.
The Hard Inner Civic is for our license agreement for when we bought the last computer equipment for the election equipment. It required an annual maintenance agreement requirement, so this is that agreement to keep the Hard Inner Civic as the software support for our election equipment.
Okay. I think maybe Commissioner saw another one that looked so similar. Commissioner, is that satisfactory to you? This is, this is a clerk's. Lourdes nodding. Lourdes, do you want to comment? That it's a different-
This is a different one.
It is?
It's different. So, this is just simply the renewal agreement?
That's an annual renewal for them to maintain the software for our election equipment.
Okay.
The Commissioner may be referring to 4A4?
Yes, yes. We're, I think we're straight now. Commissioner, is that satisfactory to you? In that case, could I have a motion on F, please?
Yes.
And a motion in a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Pose same sign. And now, Michael, come and give us some background information, and then provide the extra detail that you wish regarding our health plan. And let's take it one at a time, item number J. Oh, you know what? Forgive me, I made a mistake. Hold on that. The judges came in. We're gonna go, so sorry. You know what? You just look such, like friendly, like all my friends came and sat down. I'm so pleased to be able to say that. That's not a self-serving comment. It has the added value of being true. Forgive me, Michael, but in the interest of their time. I'm going to reopen Commissioner's public comment, as I said I would, and would recognize Judge Watts, Judge Galván, Judge Galván, and Judge Klein. You can come up collectively, or one at a time. As you know, public comment is a time when we're not going to be responding back to you, but we're going to be listening intensely.
Well, we're here without robes because we are, we have a concern. We have become tolerant of a very intolerable situation, and that's the elevators that service the tower. We have five elevators, one that is dedicated to the inmates, so that they are not brought up to the tower with the employees and the folks that work there. We've become so tolerant that we are thrilled when we see two elevators functioning. And we have jury panels of 60 and 80, and we are having, folks having to get up that tower when there's two that are functioning. And then, in the last three, four weeks, we have been blessed with one elevator functioning, the most recent of which occurred yesterday. Now, I don't know whether you know that we have now engaged in a game, and that game is, we use the Commissioners' elevator to go up to the second and third floor, because if there's only two working, they're full by the time, if you want to go from two to three to four to five. So, we get off, we go to the elevator, push the down button, we get on the elevator to go down, we open the elevator. Of course, there's a long line of folks wanting to use the elevator, and half of the elevator stay, half of the folks in the elevator stay there, because that's the only way they can get up. When it gets down to one elevator, it's a crisis situation, folks. And when that one elevator, usually it's not functioning very well, because we're not rotating the use on four elevators, we're concentrating it on one all the time. Judge Galván and I, two weeks ago, we had, I think there were two times we had one elevator. We were on the same elevator. This is what we had to do besides our judicial functions. Every floor, the elevators, the one that was functioning did not open fully. Judge Galván got on one side, I got on one side. We both pushed it open, stepped back on the elevator, only to have to repeat that at every floor until we got to our home, which is the ninth floor. Not a good situation, folks. Yesterday, I will let, I'm going to turn it over to them, but we need somebody looking at those elevators, because when we get down to one, if we get down to none, we close up business, folks. It affects the jail, it affects everybody in the courthouse. Why don't you describe what happened yesterday with the one elevator?
So, yesterday, it was just one elevator working, and we got on one, and it was completely full, and the line was to the information desk by that time already. And we went up to the third floor, and then, instead of going up, the elevator went back down, because the people were trying to manipulate the elevator on the other floor. And we actually kept on riding from one to three, four, about 10 minutes. So, that was-
And they finally got to the first floor, I would say, half the elevator stayed on the elevator. And so, I bullied myself in. And then, we stop at every floor. So, it's become a crisis situation.
It really is. And one of my concerns, besides the fact that we don't have all the elevators working, I was on that same elevator yesterday, and we actually dropped from the sixth floor all the way down to one, where we were supposed to be going up, and it was really scary. But one of my other concerns is that the litigants, the parties and the lawyers are so concerned about being late for court, that I had one lawyer actually in a suit with a ton of notebooks wearing all the way up, seven floors, and when he got there, he was soaking wet, perspired through his suit, and said, "I'm really concerned for my health," and had to sit there. So, that's another one of my concerns, is that we have people taking the stairs that maybe really shouldn't be, or aren't used to it, and we're jeopardizing their health.
No, I think they've said it all. All I want to say is, you know, yesterday was okay, because it was, it was in the afternoon, and everything was fine, but if we get hit with one elevator on a jury day, either Monday morning, or Tuesday morning, or Friday morning arraignment, I mean, it's a disaster. And so, those are our two cents, and, you know, take them for what they-
And of course, the other issue is the people in wheelchairs.
ADA comes into play.
Yeah.
Liability to everybody.
Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Taking us up, we appreciate it.
Yes. Have a great one.
Thank you. I signed up for comment, just to make a couple of comments about the elevators. You may know that there was an email sent out this morning to everyone. I hope that you received it. It was meant to be a factual email, limited to the facts as we know it. I believe Juan Pimentel has a death in his family, that's why he's not here this morning. However, I agree that it is a crisis situation. I consider it an emergency situation, and I have alerted our emergency management to be a part of the solution. I have a lot of details. I'm going to ask the Board of Judges to help me, well, through Mary Lee, help me communicate the information. That is, I'm going to write a letter to the Court Administrator, and then I'm going to have her send it out to the judges. It's going to be incredibly detailed. I don't think that's necessary for everyone. When I write everyone, it goes to literally everyone. I'm also going to ask the sheriff after this meeting to maybe spend a few minutes with me, because it impacts courthouse. I think that we have to have some option A and option B. I also just want to make a statement that is not meant to be hurtful or critical of people's past administrations, but we need to understand that, that when we do not take care of our house, these are the types of issues that occur. And therefore, I hope that there will be some consideration to my proposals to issue a certificate of obligation when that time arises in this court, to maintain adequately and to improve the infrastructure of this courthouse. We can no longer Band-Aid our way through 2019, 2020. That time is over, and we need to create the funding source. I will give you a sneak peek that we're not 100% new to this situation. It's been happening for a long time, and we do have solid information to bring to this court on the next agenda. It will include proposals, bids, and an action plan. The bad news is, is that if I ordered them today, it would take 12 weeks to modernize these cars. That would be in the light most favorable. There are action plans that we can do before the 12 weeks, and I will bring those to the future. I guess it's, is it August 28th, Tyner?
Yes.
Those will be on our agenda on August 28th. With that, I'll leave it at that, but please check your email, Commissioners, for further information.
Okay.
Coming back to Michael and sharing with us information regarding the renewals and proposals of your health plan, of our health plan.
Yes. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. Today, what we have is, I'm going to make some initial remarks to cover item 3J, and I'm also going to comment on 3K. There's some additional items there that kind of pertain as well. And we also have available with us Tomas Duran, our insurance consultant, and the Vice President of Account Management for Boone Chapman, Stacy Minton, is here as well. Our main goal today is to approve the renewals for medical and pharmacy benefits for the employee health plan. This is so the county can maintain health coverage for county employees and their dependents effective October 1, 2019, to September 30, 2020, in preparation for our open enrollment that begins on August 21st and 22nd. The handout that I've given you just includes the same information that is in your packet, however, on the county attorney-approved amendment forms. Just thought it would be a little easier for y'all to digest that way than flipping back and forth through a lot of pages. So, I have a spreadsheet here that we'll walk through in just a minute. But just to cover the items that we're going to be talking about are the third-party administration, disease management, COBRA/HIPPA Administration Pharmacy Program. Those are the renewals. Typically, we wouldn't even be having a discussion on these. I'll go over the reason why on that in just a minute. And then, we have the new services for the National Network with some options under other services that we'll need to discuss, and then, the aggregate and specific reinsurance stop-loss. The, let's see. I was going to go into it, but let's go one at a time. That'll be easier. So, if y'all will look at the first spreadsheet that looks like this, do y'all have this in front of you?
And Michael, I just want to, for the record, state that everything we're looking at is non-proprietary information.
Yes.
And it was provided to us by Boone Chapman.
The first item is the RFP for third-party administration. The, there is a rate change from 1850 per employee to 1950. This rate change was part of the original agreement. It was set out in Section 6, Exhibit 8, Item C. So, it was, it was planned and agreed to. The second item is the disease management renewal. That is also under the same situation. It has an increase from $4 to $4.25. That was in the original agreement, Section 2, Item D, and Section 4, Item E. And then, the COBRA/HIPPA and pharmacy benefits are just a renewal in term only. There are no rate changes on those. And so, if we want, Laura, I don't know if we want to break this apart into two sections, but this section on the renewals, I would recommend approval.
Lourdes, it's all listed as J. How do you, how do you prefer?
I would say individually.
All right, let's do that, then. Can you repeat, then, your request to the court?
We recommend approval of the renewals for RFP 304217, TPA, RFP 304517, Disease Management, RFP 304617, COBRA/HIPPA Administration, and RFP 304417, Pharmacy Program.
I have a question.
Absolutely. I'll tell you what, let me get a motion, and then we'll go straight to discussion. Do I have a motion to approve? In a second?
Second.
Okay, and now, go ahead.
Okay, you say the changes that were made were in the original agreement. So, you're saying in the-
In 2017, in that original agreement document, under these chapters that I specify, and as reviewed by the county attorney, these, these increases were planned, that after year two, in the second renewal, that these increases would occur. And the county agreed to those in 2017.
Okay, so basically, what you do is, he had all this for the years to come, and instead of us doing one agreement for the year, he planned ahead so that he could increase. Is that what you're telling me?
It was a multi-year agreement.
Yeah.
So, it was, it was, everyone had combined together to, to set out that plan.
So, are we not going to do year-to-year? So, is this how y'all normally do it? I'm just asking.
No, we still do year-to-year.
But he has the option for a three-year, right?
The original agreement had a two-year with additional renewals.
Yeah.
And those renewals were laid out in, in those terms, and that's what the county was put before the court, and the court approved it in 2017. And so, when it comes time to renew, we renew according to those terms.
Okay. Thank you.
But these are not, are these part of the three years, or are these the renewals?
These are the renewals.
So, technically, it's not something we have to agree with, because we can always go back out.
You could, but you would need to make that decision in, like, March.
Where were you in March?
The contract was in 2017, has been in place since then. We've all had access to that information.
But I, this is not new?
It's not new. It's been there.
I mean, you know, issue, insurance is a big issue to me. I've voted against these things in years past. I didn't vote for the one in 2017. So, to come and tell us that the rate increase in a renewal year is something we have to swallow, we don't. We don't, because it's a renewal. And if it's worked in that way, well, then, that, I mean, that's fine. We can accept it, and I don't see it failing. But if it's a renewal, doesn't mean we have to take it.
Correct. And we did come before the court in the spring, when we were talking about going out for bid for the aggregate and specific reinsurance stop-loss and the National Network. And we had an opportunity at that time. There was no indication from the court that they had any issues with what was currently in place on the other items. At that time, what I was provided to purchasing was to go out for bid for National Network and aggregate and specific stop-loss insurance. And so, that's the path that we took.
You know what I'm learning, Michael? Same thing I learned at City Council. If you don't ask a specific question, you're not going to get the answer. So, I would not have known to ask this renewal that were different than from last year. So, I think that falls on y'all's shoulders to bring, and I'm not trying to be ugly, but this is frustrating, because, and so, on the next year, does he have something else in there that's going to be different, where he gets more money on the next year if they renew? We probably need to know that right now.
Yeah. From what I saw in the agreement, there was just the one change.
So, it would just be nice that these things, and we're probably just sitting here looking at this, hoping that y'all have gone through it, and you're going to tell us everything we need to know?
Right, and that's, that's only affecting the TPA and the disease management, is not affecting COBRA/HIPPA or the pharmacy benefits.
But still, it's going to go up. Okay, thanks.
So, I have a motion in a second. Do I have any other discussion with regards to the RFPs? And I do want to emphasize that there, these were submitted for requests for proposal, and we did use the process that is available to the court, which is an insurance committee to vet these RFPs.
How many proposals did we get?
We got three. Well, four. But one was not, how would you describe it? One was not-
One was non-responsive.
Non-responsive.
One bid, one wanted a bid on the entire network.
Correct.
Right.
And that's how you'd normally do it. You don't piecemeal. Piecemeal costs you more money, and that's what we've been doing. And they wanted a bid, which, if you find across this country, municipalities, in all of the government and private entity, you're going to do it one stop, all in one company, and that's what one of those companies did. So, when they say non-responsive, they didn't respond to the way the bid was created. But they, but-
That's a legal term describing, we put out a bid, asked for a certain type of response. The response they provided didn't match with what we had asked for.
John, what do you want to do? Do you want to kick this back?
No, no, I mean, there's no way to kick it back, but, I mean, if we bring this up enough, hopefully, our consultant will get the message that this is not what we're looking for. And we talked about this the last meeting, when this issue came up last month, and I'll say it again, we need to analyze next year, go out and put, we need to start now, right? We said, wait for this process to finish.
That's correct.
And then, when we do, we can start working on, you and Tomas can start working on next year, looking at a full network wraparound with everything in it.
Right.
So, I'm just, I'm bringing it up, Judge, because I hope that we say it enough times publicly, that we're going to stick to it, so that we can start that, because I know it's going to take a long time. I know it's going to be a lot of work on them. I know it's going to be a lot of work on the committee, and then, when it comes to the court. But I think that that's really the route that we need to look at when we start, you know, when we're self-funded, we need to look for the best deal. And I think, in my opinion, my experience, that's the way to do it. So, if we can, I would love to see that next year.
Yeah, I think so, too. I mean, I agree with that, but the proposals were only seen by the committee, I guess?
That's correct. And that's been the practice for the 12 years I've been with the county.
I would have liked to see the proposal myself, so.
Yeah, we need to-
And certainly, we may, we need to have some more discussions, John, as to why this isn't a good approach, and why the wraparound is, because I'll be honest with you, I don't remember exactly all this, and this insurance stuff I have to deal with every single year and revisit it, because it's just not natural for me. So, maybe what we need to do is, you know, if we've got to do this, then do this, but if we've got to, maybe we need to start having those discussions as to, okay, why this approach was taken the first time, and then, why the, as you call it, the wraparound approach, or whatever it is you think is better, or someone else thinks is better, because I'd still like to, because, like I say, every year, I get confused on this insurance. I get it enough to be able to figure it out, but we did it a certain way for a reason, and maybe it wasn't the right reason, but we, I think we had those conversations, but I can't remember exactly. But yeah, so if we can do that, too, and I think that's what you're saying, is, let's get on it early.
Yeah, and I think Tomas is, he understands the value of that. I mean, he's the one that works the industry, so he gets it, and I think he just wants some direction for 12 years. He had specific directions as far as what to follow, and so, now that we're in, with a new court, you know, this is our chance to kind of lay out what we're looking for. So, I know Tomas will work on that.
Right.
Yeah, I think the only thing that I want to add to that is that I am very comfortable with the plan that we have. There's only three or four underwriters in the country. I'm going to be very honest with you. They may have different names, but there's only three or four major conglomerates that do this in the entire country. And we were very fortunate, because three of them actually, I think, responded- And we were very fortunate because three of them actually, I think, responded to us, or maybe at least two out of, I, I know at least two. And then we had, then you can look for local types of underwriting networks, which we had somebody also participate in that regard. I feel very satisfied that we were really aggressive on making certain that we had the very best product that's out there. And if there's a better way and a better product with cost savings, I want to know about it. But I think Tomas knows me well enough that I'd, I'd really be, as they say, irate if, if he knew that there was a better way to do it. And I have challenged him to bring us the very best cost savings that provides the best overall plan for the employees. And I think this is what we have. I feel very, I want you to know that. But I, I think the vetting process and bringing new ways to do it, I think that's always welcome. I, I don't want to put you on the spot, Tomas, but since you're here, I think it'd be important for you to come and join Michael and just say whether we could look at all other options so that we can compare in the, in the next year. Yes.
Did we want to make a, a motion on the renewals?
So I did a motion and a second and discussion. I'm ready to call the question. I just, since I'm still in discussion, just want him to, to address that issue.
Do I need to limit just to that issue?
Yeah, just limit it to that issue because I want to call the question so we can go on, okay?
The actual, the RFP that we sent out asked for, uh, even a wrap network. We had a local network, however, that did not combine with a wrap network. I met with them, specifically asked them if they would authorize me to release their rates so that I could get the reinsurance, uh, negotiating it. And I was advised by their offices that they would not be willing to release it to the underwriters. And therefore, I was unable to do anything about it. It was impossible. Now, I would like to tell you that when, the last time when we had that environmental network, the difference was approximately a million nine more. And I think, I think your auditor can confirm that. Uh, so I'm, I'm not, I'm going to limit myself to that.
Yeah, but, but the concept was is that we did a try, but what happens is they don't want to share the rates. And so therefore, there's not an ability to go out and seek the wraparound reinsurance. And that's what happened to us this year. But is again, the nice thing about, um, having you on board all the time is that we can sit down, which we will, and let's start all over again, right?
It was very clear to me that it didn't matter who, what, with, just so you got the best.
The, the best deal. And I'm sorry that they didn't want to be, but that's the nature of competition. Sometimes they want to share and sometimes they don't. Okay, thank you. I'm going to call the question at this time. All those in favor of renewing the, our renewals that were listed as, um, oh four two one seven, oh four five one seven, oh four six one seven, oh four four one seven, signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign? Okay, and then now, Michael, take us through, um...
Wait, hold on.
Yes, sir.
I, I just asked what you wanted to do. So I mean, is there something, but why are you voting no on this? I just asked if you wanted to do something. You said you had to go forward, so I'm confused.
I have problems with, with the, the process. I have problems with the way it was set up. I, I think we need to have conversations further. Look, the problem is, look...
Well, make a motion to change something.
No, no, no. There's nothing to change. It's way too late. It, it's, I want to say it's symbolic, but we all take votes sometimes to show our displeasure.
Well, I mean, we were, I was trying to...
We have our issues.
I get it.
We can't do it now. We can't do it now. It's way too late.
All right, okay.
But, but yes, it, it should have been dealt with back in the spring. We, we really didn't start working on this until the summertime. So there, there was a delay there. And I'm not saying it's on staff. It's just the process, getting the green light, all that. There's a lot of, that, there's a lot in the way that, that gets us to setting it up. That's why I'm saying now publicly is that we all hear it and that we know that's the direction we should take, or at least I think we have a consensus since we maybe can't vote on that directly right now. But just to know so, we can start that because it is a long process. But, but mine, like I said, mine was this kind of overall, you know, I have, I have some issues with it as we all have particular votes that we do that. And so that's why I did that. It's not to make anyone look bad. I just feel that the process could be better, and I hope that it is coming for the next cycle.
And, and I'll just comment that Maggie, if you would help set up an insurance committee meeting just for the purposes of, of discussion that arose here today, I think that would be helpful. I mean, why wait? We'll just go right into it. Michael, if you'll talk about the next, um...
Okay, so the next two are the new items for the RFP thirty-one oh eight national network and thirty-one oh nine aggregate and specific reinsurance stop-loss. The network is the one that we've been discussing that was awarded, uh, on seven twenty-four. Um, and there are the rates there, uh, as eleven point seven, uh, per employee. The, uh, this proposal, uh, this time around came with additional services that the court needs to consider. There is, there are two sections. One, that's going to be provided, uh, straight with Boone Chapman, which includes employee communications, enrollment meetings, uh, education and surprise bill support. Those are all items that are at no charge to the county, uh, other than under the surprise bill support. If they're able to recoup funds and get the bills reduced for the county, uh, they take ten percent of that savings. But there is a decision to make on the telemedicine piece. Uh, there are two options. One is the standard, uh, with the co-pay, uh, and the other is a consults included that does not have a co-pay. And you'll see the estimated annual costs out to the right, uh, of twenty-six thousand six seventy-five for the standard with the co-pay and the, uh, estimated annual cost of fifty-five thousand three fifty for the consults included. So we need to select one of those two options.
Can we address Dale, the, because I think it's important while we think about making the motion for the selection that also that we do not anticipate a insurance premium increase at all, despite the fact that we are going to have some additional supplemental benefits and despite the fact there is a contractual increase. And that is because of the well-managed, uh, insurance, I guess, if you will. There are own cash reserves, if you will, in the insurance fund. And, um, and so while we're approving it and you're looking at how much it does cost, I want to first address that there is a, um, there is a fund that is healthy to address these costs.
Yes, Your Honor, we, as you know, in the past, we've been running a very, uh, cost insurance fund where our, our expenses exceeded our revenue for many years, five, six years ago. We're, we're well exceeding our, our revenue. Uh, and we, we fought that by, by doing several increases that Commissioner Chesney had, had mentioned. Uh, two or three years ago, we had a very large increase. Last year, we had a one percent on each side to try to, to, uh, bring the, the level up for the revenue for that. As Michael said, two years ago, we did change our, our providers in our network, so we have seen some savings. Uh, last year, we saw one point two million dollar increase in our fund balance. So this year, we're setting on four to five hundred thousand dollars. We're not quite done with the year yet. We've had some larger expenses this year that we didn't have last year, and that, that happens from time to time. But I still foresee that we're going to probably end the year at least almost a two million dollar fund balance.
And Michael, would it be a fair, um, estimate that all of the additional charges that you see for the supplemental benefits total around two hundred and seventy thousand dollars? Is that about right? Is that my recollection?
That's correct. Uh, the other thing to point out too is the care navigation piece. This is where, uh, employees have the opportunity to be directed to a central location to have services performed. And these are the higher cost services typically. And, and in this particular, uh, item, they did some projections and we're, we're basically going to pay for everything else in these increases with this, not even touching the fund balance.
Yeah, I, I also want to, um, note for, um, the sheriff in the room, I think it's really wonderful that we have telemedicine for the very first time. That was something that I heard for the first time. I learned about that when I was at the port, but I also heard it very loud and clear from the Sheriff's Association. They were very interested in telemedicine, and I think it's because as law enforcement officers, you know that your time, you know, is so valuable. And sometimes going to the doctor could mean not working a shift. And, uh, the telemedicine piece is new. I think it's going to be an amazing tool if it's used properly. And I want you to know that we've had lots of great discussions about not just having the tools and never using them, but incorporating them in our employee training and in our wellness program, so that people know what's available to them and how to use them effectively to save money. On the care navigation, let me just say that I expect that to pay a huge dividend. Because when you're looking for surgeries, the difference between provider A, B, and C, and D, both in your hometown and outside your hometown, could be vast. And without a care navigator, you don't know that. You don't know that if you travel to Austin or San Antonio, it could be twenty thousand dollars less for the same surgery. Or conversely, if you went to one provider over another, it could be a large savings. So we think that care navigation is going to, I mean, we're going to see, we're going to run this science experiment. But I predict that if it's used actively by our employees, that we're going to see major savings because of care navigation. All of these are a result of working, um, through some of the challenges that, that I saw that our health care insurance did not have. And I asked Tomas, in fact, almost demanded it, you have to find this type of active program. The only thing Tomas and I meant to call you last night, and I didn't, was the flu shots. I want to make sure that they're in there. I don't, I know they're not itemized by line, but as long as I know they are a part of this component. Is that correct? Okay, and I'm telling you that he's nodding yes.
Tomas stating yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you for letting me get that in. But when you look at these, I just don't want, I didn't want you to think that somehow that would affect the employees' premium. And I didn't, and I wanted you to know that it, that we're safe on our bottom line. And, thank you.
I appreciate that. And I would like to, because, um, I, I really would like to have discussions on this again because there was, and I appreciate Tomas saying it, there was a good reason that this court did what this court did. And, and quite frankly, i- if, if it's a two million dollar difference, again, I'm going to have a hard time changing the way we do things. I, I, I mean, I, I, you know, if, okay, if there's not, if there's a way to do it and not do that, then that's fine. But I, I want to have those discussions early enough, whenever we need to have them, so everybody can see why we did. Because I think we can go back and bring the recordings back from those meetings and look at them. And I may need to do that. So in fact, I don't know where to find those, but if someone can do that, because I'd like to refresh myself on those discussions before we have the next discussion. So how do I, how would I do that? I, do I just, I don't remember what meeting, because someone just told me what meeting was at? I guess I can go online and find the recorded data, but if someone could just tell me the meeting it was. Because I want to go back and watch those because I, I remember these discussions were intense and long. And, and the reason we did what we did was because it saved the county millions of dollars. Now, I'm being refreshed, and I, now I'm kind of starting to remember, but I'd like to review those again because, uh, you know, this is a big deal, and John's right. If there's a different way to do it, then great. But if, if, if a different way is going to cost us two million bucks, then I don't know how we do that.
There's a two million dollar difference, and in addition, there was the impact to employees that would have been, in excess of fifty percent of the employees would have to be finding new doctors.
Right.
So that was, that was our alternatives we were picking between.
Michael, you may have said this, but I was reading the information. There's two options for the telemedicine. Which one did we take?
So Dale, did you have a recommendation?
I think we're going to get to choose.
As you all choose, uh, the standard co-pay would be if, if, uh, that would be that the employee would be required to pay a co-pay of forty-nine dollars to do telemedicine, and our current co-pay for our doctors is twenty dollars. So, uh, if I were to recommend it, even though it's more expensive, I would do the, the second line of consultant included at the four fifty P E M P for fifty-five thousand dollars. That's when I would...
That's going to be the best one for the employees.
You know, the employees, I don't think that, you know, it's available, but a forty-nine dollar co-pay for the employees is, is a large co-pay for a telemedicine.
Large, well, it's a big co-pay.
Yes, where you can go to your, your doctor. I know it says you have to go to your doctor, but normal, normal doctor's co-pay is twenty dollars.
Yeah, that's kind of high, isn't it?
That's why, that's why I was thinking, and I've, I've asked a few people that...
Tomas.
You had this, would you use it? And they'd say, and they would say, no, if it's that, that big of a co-pay.
Is that also the consultant, is that your recommendation as well?
Look, that's, that was a proposal. We can...
Negotiate.
Negotiate those numbers where we could make it a twenty and then the county pick up something. Or to me, the best recommendation would be to do the P P M and move on with it, but, uh...
Well, if we could negotiate, why didn't we negotiate already?
No, no, negotiate between, uh, then not negotiate, I already done that.
You said it, that's why I'm asking.
I meant negotiate the number that would be, uh, the twenty-four dollars doesn't have to be twenty-four. It could be twenty. Okay, the co-pay that the employee will pay, we could reduce it to twenty, uh, or fifteen or whatever you want. And then redo the P P M so that the difference, the, the money will be the same.
Yeah.
It'll just, we can change the co-pay or the P P M to make it fit, okay?
So, so what he's, I think what he's trying to get across is that the, if we choose the co-pay option, the county has the option of how we distribute that forty-nine dollars. So, so that's not a negotiation with the vendor. It's something we internally would make that decision here.
I thought he was saying it was a negotiation with the vendor, and I thought, oh, we couldn't, just already done that, okay?
So the recommendation, like if we...
Yes, please.
Is to, uh, approve the executed, um, letter of intent that's attached for RFP thirty-one oh eight national network, including employee communications, enrollment meetings, education, surprise bill support, telemedicine with the option being consults included, and care navigation.
And at this time, you don't need us to make a decision on the telemedicine then?
Yes, that's the, that's the, that's the decision. I'm recommending the consults included.
I'm, I'm sorry, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That option.
Let me get a motion in a second, and we can ask any other questions regarding. I've got a motion from Judge, Commissioner Gonzalez. Second, Commissioner Chesney. Any further discussion on the recommendation of going with the consult? Hearing none. All those in favor of passing this recommendation for RFPs three one oh eight one nine?
Uh, just this...
I'm sorry, just this one. Never mind. Thirty-one oh eight, just thirty-one oh eight. Signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign.
Okay, and then on RFP thirty-one oh nine aggregate and specific reinsurance stop-loss, we had only one bidder. The court awarded them on seven twenty-four. It was Aetna Life Insurance through Boone Chapman. Uh, I've listed the impacts below. Uh, the county recommends approval.
Can I get a motion to approve thirty-one oh nine? And again, uh, there was only one bidder. Motion in a second. Any further discussion with regards to this particular RFP for stop-loss? Hearing none. Signify by saying aye if you approve. Aye. Post same sign. Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry. The bidder is Boone Chapman. Okay, and then on item three K, those are just two renewals in term only with no change to rates. So the, we recommend approval of both. Uh, one is for the cafeteria, um, plan under RFP thirty thirty-seven seventeen, uh, with Navia. And the second item is the group term life insurance with Dearborn National Life Insurance Company. This is for the second renewal.
Do I hear a motion for the approval of both the cafeteria plan and the group term life renewal? In a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign? Okay, um... Now, Michael, we've got, um, oh, L has already passed. Okay, so we are now through with the consent agenda. And, um, I'm actually, um, going to take the, I'm going to take, Tyner, I hope you don't mind, but I think it'll flow better for everybody if we go four, three, two, one, or two, three, four, and then do one last, just because that's really the, the crux of today. And I think also a presenter has a, a airplane to catch. So at this time, I'm going to call number two, item number two on the regular agenda. And that's to receive a presentation to discuss developing an intergovernmental support agreement, also known as an I G S A with Naval Air Station Corpus Christi to support resiliency in job growth on the base. And here to present, good morning, Steve. We, we all have, uh, we have a PowerPoint that flows along with your presentation. But let me just set the stage just a little bit. Commissioners, aye for the past, I, gosh, I think maybe five years have been in... Commissioners, I, for the past, gosh, I think maybe five years have been involved with the Military Task Force here in town, specifically called the South Texas Military Task Force. And Joe Guzman, who's the executive director, is actually here in the audience. And I've just really learned so much. I've always been a fan, my, I think, Joe, you knew my grandpa Abel, he worked at the base for 38 years. I've just always loved the base and have wanted to be involved with it, finding ways that our community can support our military installations. But there are new ways that are always being developed, new tools, if you will, to strengthen a military community, particularly against what death by a thousand cuts, Joe likes to call it, or the worst one of all, BRAC or son of BRAC, right? So this is a very real threat. Over decades ago, we fought so many different battles in DC, trying to show how strong we were, Steve. And this is, when I heard about this, the art of the possible presentation, I wanted the commissioners to hear it. And I, this morning, had a Military Task Force meeting, and I just gave a teaser. I didn't ruin it. I just said that today, we would be receiving this presentation, and I didn't want our discussion, which is going to be big today on tax rate, to overshadow what I believe is one of the greatest opportunities this county has, A, to make money, and B, to support our military. And I hope everybody's ears perked up when I said, A, make money. Did you hear it, Jag?
[coughs]
You got a Marine right here, sir. And so with that, please, take it away. Introduce yourself for the record, and if you would, I know you've got the presentation, but just give us so slightly a background as to why you are the right presenter for this subject matter.
Thank you, Judge. Good morning.
You, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me here. I am Steve Bonner. I am a past Air Force officer who has worked closely in installation management for many, many years, both inside the military, as both a uniformed officer, then as a junior political appointee in the Pentagon, and finally, as a consultant. And I've seen that BRAC. I was literally on day one of round one of BRAC, put into the position of where I was working with Sacramento County, California, on the closure and reuse of an Air Force Base, as a young captain i- in the Air Force. So, so I've, I've seen this evolve through the years. And I have been involved in the development of many, many partnerships between the military and local governments, state governments, and nonprofit groups, to protect military bases from urban sprawl and species encroachment issues and the like. I've been involved in the kind of issues you all have been struggling with here for several years, in terms of the nexus between the military mission and the exciting opportunities of wind energy development. And I have also been very active with the Association of Defense Communities for a number of years, as an advocate for the military and military installations, and the relationships between the military bases and communities. So much so, I was one of the authors of a paper in 2012 that talked about partnerships between state and local governments and military bases. They got the attention of the Secretary of Defense, the House and Senate Armed Services Committees. They asked us through the Association of Defense Communities to help them create a new law that would enable partnerships, very productive partnerships, win-win scenarios to come into being nationwide. And that's exactly what we did, and that's what I'm here to talk about this morning. So again, thank you for having me. What I'd like to do is just quickly talk about a different way of thinking about our military bases this morning. Talk about that, that new law, and how that changes the relationships between communities and their bases, and then talk about how we might be able to apply that here in the coastal bend with Navy Corpus Christi. So why don't we think about our bases as economic development engines? Stop and think about that for a second. They're great jobs. They have super multiplier effects. They, they provide us with a lot of benefits. And yet, when the Navy might call us and say, hey, we're thinking about moving in two new, I don't know, drone training squadrons to the base, we say, great, how can we help you in Washington? But we don't think about how we can help you here, here locally. You know, conversely, if the Army were to call us and say, hey, we're not at capacity at, at the depot, and we're going to cut 2,000 jobs, we don't think about it in terms of, okay, how can we here locally actually do something that helps protect those jobs early on, or that enhances the mission of the base, or enhances its resilience to natural disasters, or things like that? So, so the military presents us with great growth potential these days, because the military is shifting missions around and developing new things like drones, and AI, and robotics, and the like. So they're looking for new places, different places to put things. They're also looking to move things away from, from, from places. So what we would do if one of the refineries, or a shipper, or some, some new industry was coming to town, is you all might consider some type of a tax abatement, joining in on some type of a, a investment zone, or something like that. There, you have a variety of economic development tools available to you when you're dealing with a commercial entity, but you don't have those same tools available to you when you're dealing with the military with, with all of those great jobs. So if we don't have those, those typical tools available to us, what can we do? First and foremost, there are things that you've already been doing for quite some time. You can work to protect the, the missions of the base from, from being negatively impacted by, by growth, by, by species issues, by, by various other, other impacts that, that may hurt the, the ability to perform the mission, and make the military think about, well, maybe the mission should be done elsewhere. Y'all been doing that already. You can also support the quality of life for our soldiers, sailors, airmen and Marines. And this one is so important right now. You know, when, when I was in the Air Force, the longest I was apart from my family was three months. And that was because my wife took our kids back home from Japan, so that the grandparents could meet our young daughter, who had been, been born over, over in Japan. Not because I was deployed somewhere. But these days, our, our sailors and soldiers are deploying multiple times, for multiple months or even years. It's having an incredible effect, and negative impact on families. It's, it's increased suicide rates, you know, in, in the military. It's hurting our retention of pilots and soldiers and the like. And there are things that we can do here locally to help support spouses, to ensure that, that they've got good paying jobs and can find them, that, that their kids go to good schools, that, that help take some of the worries and impacts off of those soldiers and sailors when they are overseas. So, so those are things that, that you all, and I know the South Texas Military Task Force is, has been actively advocating for, for some time. But we can also lower the cost of doing business in our communities, to do exactly what we were talking about a minute or two ago. Approach this from an economic development viewpoint. And I'm actually going to skip ahead here to, pardon me. I'm, I'm sorry, I made a change to the presentation this morning, and I tripped myself up there. So back in the 90s, there were a couple of examples of how communities had started thinking in this, this different way. Up in San Antonio, at the Brooks Air Force Base, they created the Brooks City Base, where the city of San Antonio took over the operation and ownership of Brooks Air Force Base, outside of the base realignment and closure process, and lowered the cost of doing business for the Air Force there. Unfortunately, the Air Force still closed that base. So, so that didn't get a chance to play out. But in Monterey, California, it did get a chance to play out. And I'm not going to go through all of the details of, of what they, they did, and how it happened in Monterey. I can provide those if, if you want them. The critical points are in the bottom right corner of this slide. Today, by the Army Audit Agencies on Numbers, and consistently over the last 20 years, it has cost the Army 22% less to own and operate the Presidio of Monterey than it would have under normal operating conditions. Okay? This has strengthened the military value of that base in, in the eventuality of a future BRAC, and it has produced significant annual revenue outside of the typical tax revenue models for the local governments there. In fact, in 2018, it produced $800,000 for the city of Monterey. So what that means is that through recovering all of their costs, and all of their indirect costs, now, that money comes back into the coffers of, of the local government. And when the sheriff, the fire, fire chief need a new vehicle, they've got the flexibility, they've got the money in the bank to be able to go buy that vehicle. Or they, they've got the revenue stream, that if they want to borrow the money to, to do that, they can, they can clearly show that as well. So that's an incredible change, because now, all of a sudden, you've got partnership that's paying for itself. So as I said, back in 2012, some friends of mine and I wrote this, this article. We helped put together the language of what is today known as an intergovernmental support agreement, in Title 10 of the United States Code, Section 2679. What I G S As do is they allow for a sole source collaborative approach for state and local government, to sit down with a military base, develop concepts that use local wage rates, not federal wage rates, that provide for, for all different types of installation support services, from infrastructure through plumbing, roofing, computer repair, or purchase, I mean, all different types of, of support services and projects. It's a two-way partnership, too. This is an interesting point. If, if a military base has a capacity and capability that a local government needs, the military base can provide that out into the community, under this authority. And they get reimbursed from, from the community. So up in Youngstown, Ohio, there are reserve units that are demolishing derelict housing off-base, up there. Great, great example of, of that. Now, interestingly, this cannot impact one job, or even a part of a full-time equivalent of any federal employee on the base. Okay? So that basically drives most of these types of partnerships into things that the military is acquiring under contract already from, from some vendor. It does, does it apply to first responders? So it can't impact your, your police, fire, EMT-type folks. It allows for, for 10-year terms with absolutely no limitations on how often this, this can be renewed. So for instance, out in Monterey, California, they've been doing this for 30 years now. And most importantly, it takes the federal acquisition regulations out of the equation for the most part. And that is the, the number one reason why bases, military bases are so expensive for us, the, the American taxpayer today. It, it's not that, that folks aren't managing their bases properly, there, there are investment decisions that are being made that, that are difficult. But it's the fact that, that the vendors have to comply with so many regulations and everything, that it just drives the costs up. So this eliminates that. Some great examples of where that's, that's been applied. The most pertinent one to a county is in Lowndes County, Georgia. That's Valdosta, Georgia, in the southern part of the state. The county there has taken over operation of the wastewater treatment system for the base. The, the Air Force was about to have to invest tens of millions of dollars in upgrading a wastewater plant that was out of compliance with the Clean Water Act. The county had a compliant plant and excess capacity, so they have taken over that. They are decommissioning that, that old plant, and they're producing revenue for the county in, in terms of processing the wastewater, but they're also saving the Air Force over $200,000 a year. I'm very proud to have been involved in a couple of recent successes here in Texas, up, up in Abilene with the waste management deal, and in San Antonio with a paving deal. And to, to cover those in a little bit more detail, in Abilene, the city is now hauling the trash for Diaz Air Force Base. Diaz Air Force Base was paying about $440,000 a year for its commercial and residential trash services. That, that was to a small business that was actually an Alaskan native-owned company. So it wasn't even a local small business that, that was, was being done with. Today, without discounting their rates one penny, the city of Abilene is saving the Air Force in excess of $200,000 a year. So the Air Force has gone from a $440,000 a year bill to, to less than $200,000 a year bill, for exactly the same service, hauled to exactly the same landfill.
And Steve, although obviously, we're not privy to what the city of Abilene negotiated, they also were compensated adequately for that ability to create that opportunity.
Yep. So, so they're generating $179,000 a year in revenue back into their general fund, just the same way if they were hauling trash for a Walmart.
Got it.
You know? And, oh, by the way, they have expanded their capacity now, since they bought a new truck, and they don't provide service to, to the base all the time, they've actually got more capacity to be able to, to serve their, their other customers as well. Up in San Antonio, thanks to the leadership of the Alamo Area Council of Governments, the city of San Antonio put together an agreement where, where they're now doing the simple mill and overlay road projects on Joint Base San Antonio. The first one was on Fort Sam Houston last spring, saved 25% for, for the military over what they normally pay for, for road projects. What that translates into, in, in terms of a huge base like Joint Base San Antonio that has four big components to it, is the potential for savings to the Air Force in just mill and overlay projects alone, of $5 million a year. And that translates into revenue back to the city of San Antonio of around $500,000 a year. And by the way, the city of San Antonio contracts that out to a local paving company, not one owned by an Alaskan native corporation, or somebody from North Carolina, or something like that. So, so the profits that that company generates stay in, in the community. That's led us on to a really exciting development. For the first time, on the 25th of September, Brigadier General Laura Linderman, the commander of the 502nd Air Base Wing in Joint Base San Antonio, and Ms. Diane Rath, who is the executive director of the Alamo Area Council of Governments, will sign the first-ever blanket intergovernmental support agreement. What this is going to allow for is, the military's going to be able to come to the Council of Governments and say, hey, we've got a requirement for paper. We've got a requirement for fixing roofs. We've got a requirement for, for whatever it is. And now the COG is going to be able to look and say, well, okay, city of San Antonio, Bear County, Guadalupe County, Bear County, Guadalupe County shirts, they all provide these services. This is what the costs are. Here's the best deal for the military. Going to provide the military with that deal, and then both the COG and the local government are going to participate in the proceeds back out from that. That's going to completely transform the relationship between the San Antonio community and Joint Base San Antonio. So I'm from the San Antonio area, Bernie. We pride ourselves on being big advocates and cheerleaders for our base. We're now going to be service providers to our base as well and be able to do this on a perpetual basis from now on. And yeah, oh, by the way, the Navy is doing intergovernmental support agreements as well. They're just behind, frankly, what the Army and the Air Force have been doing, but they have been dipping their toes in the water. They've developed a policy, and they are now ready to go full steam into this new world. So how would we apply this here to Navy Corpus Christi? Well, you know, the sky's the limit. It depends upon what you, as a community, are willing to do and what the Navy needs and feels like they're willing to do. How would we approach that? I would say you need to use a very deliberate process. I call it going slow to go fast. You make sure you get a good concept, you do all of your due diligence, you get all of the staffing out of the way. You know, we not only would have Navy bureaucracy that still has to be fed to a certain degree. You've also got your own decision-making processes. Here's the local government to go through, and then you implement that. And that normally takes anywhere from six to 12 months to be able to work all the way through, to be able to get it.
In order to get what I would consider a blanket IGSA, or would you, is that for a specific IGSA?
Either.
Okay. So within six months, you said if we start, we could get this accomplished.
Six to 12.
Yeah. And I want to, six to 12, and I also just want to interject, you're catching a lot. It's a deliberate presentation because I think what the future holds is the CEO of our base and the Admiral Sinatra, you know, might define for our base what they think could be appropriate, and then they would deliver that information possibly to the task force, who then would deliver it to me, and we would seek this court engaging in an IGSA. I want you to know that this is not a weird ask, that the city is already, they look very interested to me. They said they were also considering, because there are things they do that we don't do, particularly in utilities. But when it comes to infrastructure, if we can help our base save money, be more resilient, and create a revenue source for us, that's what this, why this process is being presented to you. And I wanted to create that relevance so that you know we're not just in class today to learn for no reason, that there is a real deliberate interest on my part to see if there is a will. And if there is a will on the base, then there's going to be a will for me to be an advocate. Joe, did you want to, come on up, Joe, because they require me on the video. You have to come up. Sorry. Joe Guzman. You know Steve?
Absolutely.
Okay, sorry.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. We had a short discussion on that with the Navy CEO this morning.
Oh, good, after I left?
After you left.
Okay.
They were just off the outside, but they've got some projects that need to be addressed, you know, so.
Yeah. Joe, I just don't want to belabor it, but you know better than anybody, we have an awesome base, don't we? But it's a 1940 base through and through.
That's why we repair.
And this is why this is a need. I'm not inventing work for us, folks. I am trying to recognize, as a task force member, what their struggles are post Hurricane Harvey, dealing with 1940 structure. We want this space to be around for generations to come. We have to get involved and help. I've always wanted to help. I thought the only solution we had were grants. And now I know that government can help, and here's the best part, government can win by having revenue generated. And that's what I'm excited about, Joe.
And like I said, they're going to continue discussions and.
That's great. Great news. And now that I know you know Steve, I feel better. You'll be able to continue the dialogue without me. Okay, great. Steve, just in the time that we have left, will you take us through what, if there's anything else that you think might be valuable to us? I mean, I think using this model, we might have some real opportunities here.
Sir.
Go ahead.
Just a question, so, what's curious, you're looking for partnerships, but as a partner, you actually will be, you'd be subcontracting with us, would be like a subcontractor to you, right?
No, you would be the partner with the Navy.
Okay.
The partnership would be between.
So let's just take an example, Steve. The Navy says, I have a road that I need to build.
You subcontract with us, or you contract with us?
The Navy contracts with you, and then you go to your, you know, whether you do it organically with your own road department or whether you go out to a local government, and that's really what this slide shows. The base has two options for doing this at this point.
Okay.
It can go the traditional way through the federal acquisition regulations, which is more expensive, as we talked about, or it can come to you all, you know, and you all can provide it organically, or you can go out to your vendor through this IGSA, this intergovernmental support agreement, that works both ways.
I got you. That's good.
And what you develop is a public-public-private partnership at that point, and it's one that pays for itself.
Yeah. I think that's what's exciting, is one of the things that I've learned through this budget process is ad valorem is not necessarily always your friend. In other words, you wish you could do more. How can I do more when I'm confined to, you know, one sourcing of the majority of our dollars? And so I'm constantly racking my brain to find ways that there are revenue sources outside an ad valorem model that can be in the six, you know, I want it to be a significant revenue model. And this is a significant, can hold the key to a significant revenue model. And I wouldn't have been so excited and put it on this agenda had it not been for the exciting news that happened just a few weeks ago with Joint Base San Antonio. Now I feel 100% validated that what we've been talking about for months is right in our backyard with the model that works. If it passes muster for Joint Base San Antonio and it works for the COG there, it can work here. And the fact that the city perked up this morning when I mentioned it and said, we're interested, too, that even further excites me. So again, I'm not, this was not haphazard, it was deliberate. My hope next year is that we can, you know, see a revenue stream in the very near future that is a result of an IGSA contract, because we need to be able to help our aging base, and they are one of our greatest, if not the greatest, economic engine here.
This is now being done all over the country, you know? The folks in the Pentagon, who I know who are making decisions about basing, are starting to look at these things. And they're starting to say, hey, okay, if it's going to be 5%, 10%, 20% cheaper for me to put a mission at Base X versus Base Y, you know, all of the things being equal, as long as it makes sense within the national security framework and the like, obviously they're going with Base X.
That's right. There's no doubt. And this community travels to the Pentagon every September. I'll be going with Joe in a couple of weeks. This will be part of the discussion. For your information today, it's information-only. With this presentation, you have it on your, in PowerPoint form. Steve's contact information is there. I know he'd be pleased to answer questions later. But I've kind of named Edward. He was voluntold that he would be the IGSA czar. He likes that. And I gave it to him, I don't know, a few months back, and I said, it's this thick, Edward, just, you know, start it. By Monday morning, I had given it to him that Thursday or so, by Monday morning, he's, I know all about it, Judge. So I think his enthusiasm, given that he has dealt with infrastructure projects for so many years here, he's been briefing Juan, I think is a way for us to truly vet this. I'm passionate about it, so I recognize I have an inherent bias towards the military and wanting to see our bases resilient and mission always intact. So I've allowed Public Works and Edward to really have these robust discussions in order so that we can bring the best information to you. And Steve, you do this for a living, so we may, if we go any further, you are the type of person, are you not, that would negotiate and help construct an IGSA?
I would facilitate your process.
Correct. Okay, super. I appreciate it. If there are any discussion, I'll have it entertained again. This is presentation-only. And again, thanks, Joe, for being here, and Edward, for the extra work that I have assigned. I really hope that you thought it was valuable, and I think you're as excited as I am what it could mean revenue-wise to the county.
Well, thank you for the presentation, and I certainly see the value in this. I think it's so important that all the entities work together, and I hope the city jumps on this. Thank you.
Steve, can you help me with one question I had on one of the slides that you listed, the benefits? And one was talking about the local wage rates, and it said, no bacon, Davis Bacon or Service Contract Act. So that rule doesn't apply then to contracts that are done with these agreements, or?
That's absolutely correct. Now, you know, most local governments around the country do already use federal wage rates in your contracting, so that may not be a major factor. But in areas that don't, or if you are using your own organic internal capabilities and you pay your county employees on a different scale than Davis Bacon, then that can make a significant difference.
So it could be utilized if that's the standard practice, which I think it is in some of our contracts in the area, but not necessarily, obviously not with our staff, but with contracts that are done building schools or other.
The interesting thing is, even though you all do use those wage rates, those aren't the major factor in why federal contracts are so much expensive. It's all of the other reporting and compliance and stuff like that that the federal acquisition regulations throw at people.
All the red tape.
You're right.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, thank you. Well, really appreciate it. I know you're catching, you're heading back, but we're really appreciative. And as I said, I know that Edward will continue this process and dialogue, and I'm going to urge you to, whenever Joe says he's ready for you, I think the task force is, I think we've grown to over 20 now members. I think whenever the task force is ready, we'd like for you to make a presentation to them as well.
Happy to do so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good morning.
Good for five.
And this time, let me go to number three and ask the discussion on motor vehicles, Tyner. Will you take that?
We're going to ask to table that, Judge.
All righty.
We're waiting, yeah, we're waiting on a equipment list from the state.
Okay, can you put it, we're going to, I'll take a motion to table for August 28th and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. And now, is Maria here, or who will take, East Sivis?
I do have a message from Maria that can't be here due to a conference.
Oh, I'm sorry, I knew that. Dale?
That's the one I kind of wanted to table for the.
Is it for, is it executive?
Executive, yes.
Okay, can I have a motion to table? And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Okay, that one is table to executive session.
We can just do it.
And, I'm sorry? Yeah, I'm going to go right to it, right, yes. Number one is, at this time, because he's here and he's been very patient, Johnny, would you come up and give us the proposal from the hospital district? Obviously, Commissioners, we're going to go through everything this morning. The Neoces County tax rate, the farm-to-market, and the Neoces County Hospital District. The purpose of today is to vote on the proposed tax rate and take a record vote so that we can authorize any publishing notices that might be appropriate. Again, this is not a discussion of how the expenditures would go, there's not a, although Johnny might, but just in general, our goal here on number one, item number one, is to create a record vote for a proposed tax rate. Lourdes, would you like us to do, after Johnny will do the hospital, and then?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that's how we're going to approach it. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. The hospital district is, would like to continue with the court's past practice of adopting the effective tax rate for the rate for the district for next year. So that, I believe the calculation for the effective rate is 0.112421. And the district, as I said, would like to continue with the court's past practice of doing that.
Well, that's a pretty easy presentation to make, Johnny. So you're saying, basically, the board's going forward with the effective tax rate again?
Commissioner, we have enough in reserves, in our funds and stuff, to weather any events that may come up within the next year or so. You know, at some point, I'm not saying we'll continue with the effective tax rate in future years, but our financial position is one that leaves us in a place where we can continue to use the effective tax rate.
And I don't know, is that what you just gave me, was your financial position? Because I was just going to ask, because I just got this handed to me, so I don't know if this is what you, what y'all gave me for this, or?
I think this is just for our use.
So I guess my question is.
Johnny's was on email to us.
Commissioner, it's shown on the bottom of that report you just received, for a proposed rate of 0.112421.
Oh, sure, it is, absolutely. It's at the bottom of page, at the first page.
So I guess just, so we're, you know, transparent and the public's watching, tell us what your effective tax rate is, what your reserves are, how much new money this is going to generate, and new money meaning legit new growth that is not an increase in taxes.
Sure, Commissioner.
Because it's a good presentation, so let's have some good news, right?
Absolutely. If the effective tax rate's adopted, because of the mechanics and the math of how that works, that would generate a little over $570,000 more than the district received last year using the effective tax rate then and considering the values in place then. So assuming that the values, with the values changing this year, we're using the rate, so it'll generate about $570,000. Even though the effective tax rate's supposed to generate the same, the mathematics of the formula yield a little bit more. So to go on to answer your other question, Commissioner, if we go with the budget that we have now, and we've had the benefit of receiving on Monday, the counties requested expenditures, and we walked through those with the judge and talked about them, it would leave our general fund balance next year at about $13,008,000. And it would also leave our indigent care fund at a balance of 56,200,000. 56,000,000.2.
13,800 is general fund reserves, and 56,200,000, 56,000,000?
Is the indigent care reserve. So the total that would be finishing up next fiscal year would be just over $70,000,000.
Okay. And do you regularly or not regularly dip into the indigent care reserves?
Commissioner, the, I'm going to answer this kind of in two ways. We regularly dip into the general fund because the last few years, we've had budget deficits, and so the general fund has been funding itself as long as it had a balance. So that's what we've been doing. The indigent care fund is sitting out there for a couple of reasons. The main one is that the program that we operate with SPON was once reviewed by the feds in 2012, and they elected not to pursue the mechanism here that we use. In other words, they didn't find fault with it. They did find some issues with the mechanisms that were used in Dallas and Fort Worth, and as a result of that, they went back, and the judges mentioned this in prior meetings, went back and recovered funds from the Dallas and Tarrant County hospital districts. Now, the two other districts, they looked at four hospital districts in Texas in 2012, Dallas, Tarrant, the other two were Travis and us. So they did not come back against Travis's arrangement or ours. However, since the feds went about recouping several million dollars back from Dallas and Tarrant, they're coming back for a second cycle at reviewing the programs, except they're doing it through the state. And so the state, the Health and Human Services Commission, has already sent letters that many of the funding models that are used to generate funds for these intergovernmental transfers need to be unwound. need to be unwound. They did not say that for the hospital district, but instead, for us, they wrote a position paper to CMS. They said, "We believe that this arrangement complies, and because you did not do anything with the arrangement in 2012, we think it's on good grounds." But we handicapped that, Commissioner, with about 50/50, because we think that they could still come back and tell us that the funding mechanism, in other words, the SPON membership revenue we have coming in could be challenged, and there could be potentially a recoupment. So the long and the short of all that is, is if they do that, then our membership agreement with SPON goes away, because it'll essentially be determined to not be following federal rules. And at that point, the district's major line item revenue would be going away, because under this budget, we would plan on receiving about 33, a little over $33,000,000 in tax revenues, but our main revenue would be coming in the form of our SPON membership revenue is about 77.5 million. So the reason we're sitting on the indigent care fund balance is when you come back and do the math, that the hospital district would, first of all, be needing to deal with an indigent care contract again. That number's already been preset. It's right around $30,000,000. And then I have additional expenditures in terms of the county healthcare expenditures that we've been carrying all those years. And so that's why we're trying to keep this money reserved in the indigent care fund until we get a better feel for whether the federal government is going to come back and unwind this program.
So at the end of the day, it's a potential money grab, which is, you know, about right. And then, but the 56,200, y'all don't use, you're just reserving for the reasons you've just explained, so that there's no in and out of that fund at this point?
That's correct, Commissioner. And there's one additional reason, is that the new studies that we're getting underway, y'all have heard about reviewing the jail diversion program and doing the community health assessment. We believe that as a part of that jail diversion program review, that there is going to be a recommendation, that there be a, they typically call them restoration centers, but it's a place where they, they work with some, that they cycle some of the people they arrest through the facility, and Commissioner Gonzalez knows quite a bit about that, too. And we believe that there is going to be a need for some funding for that building. So whether the hospital district funds it out of its funds, or we go out and issue debt, we believe that this balance sheet and our income statement leave the district best positioned to deal with that either way. We can either pay for it, or we can go out and issue C O's or whatever the court thinks we need to do. The district does not have any debt at this point, has not had debt for about the last 10 years.
And what is the percentage, someone do that for me real quick, what is the percentage of the reserves that you have on 13,800? What's the, what is that? That's a pretty high reserve percentage, which is good for you. That's good.
It's a little, it's over 30%.
Okay, great. All right, that's all I've got. Thank you, Johnny.
I just want to remark that it's good to refresh your memories, commissioners, and all the good things that the hospital district does for us, including the jail diversion program that you just mentioned. They pay for the alcohol and drug rehabilitation center, known as Charlie's Place affectionately, but today, it's now known as Senecor. The Council on Alcohol and Drug Abuse, Palmer Drug Abuse Program, the County Juvenile and Adult Diabetes Program is also appropriated, emergency medical services to the tune of over half a million dollars, the M H I D, and I don't know if I missed, I mentioned, did I mention County Jail Healthcare Services?
There are a couple lines down.
They're on there as well. I guess the point is, is that without the hospital district, we could not function. And so I want to publicly say how much Noises County relies on having a healthy hospital district, in that their fiscal health is of the utmost importance because of all of the mutual programs that, that affect Noises County citizens that they take care of. In addition, this year, we have asked as a court to assist this county in programs and/or capital and/or, I'm trying to think of what other word I should use, but in line items that, that have a direct nexus to health and safety, and that fall within the mission of the hospital district. And again, these include, but are not limited to, because my, I don't have it in front of me, but you'll recall that we had a Buffalo turbine from vector control, we had a counselor for juvenile, we had a, two of the sheriff's requests for deputies that work the mental health component. I'm missing one, Johnny.
The, well, we have the health department for a computer.
The lap, the infrastructure, yes, the IT infrastructure, technology, yeah.
Vector control you mentioned, and then there's also additional funding provided in the budget for the MST program at the juvenile.
Right, the juvenile, that's the counselor. Yes, so the point is, is that they are really, they are, they are helping address the serious, serious health needs of our community. And so I think that the fact that they can be so fiscally responsible and do all of those things and maintain no debt has been tremendous. It's also noted by this court that without the hospital district, we would not have had the ability to hire an expert that helped us through navigating the waters, and I still think that he should be retained, because this fight is still a very serious, it's still a very serious threat to have to lose. I mean, we passed L P P F as a safety net, but we prefer the system we're working on now, because it's a difference of tens of millions of dollars on I G T.
That's great.
And so, that's right. So we want to continue that. So again, they were very much instrumental in all of those. And I also want to acknowledge that their budget, which I was, I've really reviewed it with a fine-tooth comb, they've made two adjustments, one of which moved them in a higher category, but almost was by my own hand, which was my insistence that we have a behavioral health assessment countywide, and a deep dive into our jail diversion program so we could make it truly successful in the future. And thank you for that, and that is reflected in line item 14 in the budget. That is why you see such a huge jump in professional fees. And then the second one is a huge jump down, and that's because the jail diversion program, you have provided a budget that accurately reflects their actual expenses plus a little cushion, taking them from $6 million to $2.5 million. And therefore, you'll have, and available to you all with that, with that budget, with that new budget on jail diversion, an additional approximately, you know, $3 million-plus dollars available to the hospital district, until such time as we can make a decision as to the, you know, we need to assess what the jail diversion program tell, I mean, what the deep dive tells us.
Judge, just to care, for the benefit of the court, on Monday, when we discussed our budget for the jail diversion program, as y'all are aware, the Leon Evans and Carla Ramirez are going to be reviewing that program, and we're going to have some language in the funding agreement this year, that if they come back with some things that makes sense that we ought to be doing, that we can adjust that agreement.
That's, that's correct, and that's going to be essential. And no sooner had you left here, I think I got home, it was maybe 7:30, and Carla Ramirez had been emailing. So all my barking about what's taking so long in getting us, getting them started, appears that by magic, we are now really close to getting them to start work, so much so that they have given us a list of things to do. And, and we need to get on that list immediately. At any rate, as Commissioner Chesney duly notes, the effective rate is the floor, and the ceiling is the rollback rate. And so I would entertain a motion to accept the hospital district's proposal to accept the effective rate, which is listed as, let me just read it again for the record, .112421. And that is a decrease from last year. That was for you, Tim. Let me say it again. That was a decrease from last year. I want the citizens to know that the hospital district is doing more. The legislature should take notice, because that's what they asked us to do. We can only do this because of the strong fiscal health of the hospital district board, despite the fact that next year, it'll be a very interesting picture, because we know that we have major needs, and I think next fiscal year, we're going to be addressing those needs. Are there any questions? Did I hear the motion?
Move.
And the second?
Second.
And any further discussion of Johnny? There's a lot here. And I would, you know, Carolyn, thank you. Commissioner Vaughn, thank you for sitting with me on Monday and really going through it. But for the other commissioners, is there any other question of Johnny before we release him? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Johnny, thank you. We'll be in touch very soon about the emails and whatnot of the things she's asked of us.
We'll make sure we got plenty of checks printed for next year.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Give it over to him now.
All right. We're just moving right along here. Let's take the farm-to-market. What do you say?
Yes, Your Honor, we have to do the combined general fund, debt service, and road fund as a, as a, as a, as a unit, since it's an entire county governmental entity. We've been having several budget hearings that we've gone through, and we've had several different items. In accordance with Local Government Code 140.1010A, we're required to propose a tax rate for the county showing these values. And in that proposed rate, I need to, I'm required to provide you with the, and that's what you have in front of you at the moment, which was the last year's adopted tax rate. And then the last year's adopted tax rate was .313088, with the general fund being .264913, the debt service being .044276, and the road fund being .003899. Again, the total rate for the adopted rate was .313088. Also, in accordance with that, we did our calculation based on the appraisal values that were provided to us from the appraisal district to calculate the 2020, 1920 and 20 effective tax rate, as well as your rollback rate. For the tax year 2019, 2020, our total effective tax rate is .298987, with the general fund being .252974, the debt service .042286, and the road fund .003727. Again, the effective tax rate was .298987.
And, excuse me, Dale, but just in case we're not following, it's definitely page one in the middle. Okay.
Yes. We're also required to provide you what the requirement would be if we decide the maximum rollback rate for the county at this fiscal year that is still an 8% increase above the effective rate. For the maximum rollback rate, the total tax rate would be .319362, with the general fund being .273211. The debt service, which would be, meets the full requirements that we have for debt issuance, would be .042126. And the maximum rollback rate for the farm-to-market, it would be .004026, setting the maximum rate at .319362. Now, again, during our discussions, we brought up several different scenarios of trying to do this. Now, the proposed rate is basically setting the ceiling of the tax rate that we can go through as, through our hearings and adoptions. We can definitely go below the rate, but we, but whatever proposed rate we set, we cannot go higher than that. So with that, I've put several scenarios together showing that, and working with our budgets cycle, the proposed rate will be the same tax rate that we had in the prior fiscal year of .313088. There are going to be some small changes. The general fund will be .266937. The debt service is again at fully funded .042126. And the road fund, because of the conditions it has, we're going to go the maximum rollback rate for the road fund of .004025. Therefore, presenting a proposed tax rate for the county at .313088.
Point 313088?
Yeah, that is correct.
That's not your recommended rate? This is the higher rate?
That's the higher rate that has been discussed, that we're trying to set the ceiling. This is the ceiling that, that we'll be starting to do notices and hearings. The adopted rate can definitely be lower than this rate, but it cannot be higher. So we get during our budget, because this rate is above the effective rate, it requires two public hearings, and then we also have to do the, setting the date of adopting the tax rate, and as well as adopting the proposed budget. At that time, the rate will be discussed, and at that time, we definitely can go lower than this proposed rate. But we cannot go higher with this proposed rate without going through the public hearings and notifications over again.
So, makes sure I understand. So we're doing this simply not to reflect what we as a court are going to end up doing?
Right.
But we're, but we're setting a ceiling, and the ceiling is, we would have the same tax rate as last year?
That is correct.
Okay, so.
And that again is .313088. That's the same exact tax rate as that we had last year, and we cannot go over that rate.
If this is the rate that's proposed, and then y'all adopt this as your proposed rate, going through the hearings and going through the adoption of the rate, you cannot exceed this rate without doing more public hearings and notifications.
And I'm.
You can definitely go less.
And I'm truly not trying to be a smart aleck here, John, at all, but this would be one of those symbolic votes for me normally, because I don't, I probably would not support this going forward, but I'm, I'm okay if we're setting this as the ceiling.
It's the ceiling.
But, but I want to be very clear that that doesn't mean I'm going to vote for it later.
That's understood. We're just trying to set the ceiling so we can do the discussion in our, our two public hearings that's required. And when we get to those numbers, we need to talk about when those hearings will be, as well as when the adoption of the budget rate. But we need to first propose a proposed rate to determine what our ceiling is. And we're proposing a ceiling is at the same tax rate as last year, with a small modification with the rates that we have discussed.
But those rates still total up to?
Those still total up to the same, same, yes, yes.
Last year.
Yes.
They do.
The one that went down the most.
I don't know if you want to mention that the road fund would yield $100,000 more under this scenario than last year?
That's correct.
So if you were really comparing side by sides, you'll notice the general fund is a little different, and the road fund is a little different. And that's because the road fund, we really believe, needs to have, I wish we could have more revenue, but it can only generate $100,000 more if you take it to the rollback. But given our transfers of half a million every year, we really need to make certain that this is, this is a better budgetary tool to utilize here for the road fund.
Yes, that's what we were, when we were looking at the definition of the road fund, and as you said, this goes up to the maximum rollback rate, and only brings in $100,000, which is something we're trying to continue funding from the general fund of anywhere from $500,000 to $600,000 more a year. So we're trying to reduce that cost by increasing this slightly, but we don't want it to exceed any rollback rate. So that's what we're proposing these rates at this time. And I know, Commissioner Chesney, you asked this question the other day about our debt service rate. Our debt service rate is going down because of our debt service requirements. And I know we're discussing a capital, a possible debt issuance in the near future. Depending on the size of that, next year, we might have a problem that that might be going up.
It has to go up with the elevators and the.
Right, but, but when you add them all up, it's the same number. But I just, you know, wanted to make sure that everybody was aware, the numbers change between general fund, road fund, debt service fund, but the, but the total is the exact same. And again, with the hospital district adopting the effective rate.
They're proposing the effective rate.
They're proposing, excuse me, proposing the effective rate. There's a little bit of a balancing that occurs there financially for the taxpayer as well. Because what, what does the effective do for the hospital? It goes down.
Yes.
Okay? Why is that? Because the values went up, and because they are not subject to the same abatements, their values of going up, the way ours go up, have a different level of increment, of raising. So it's very important that when you look at it, you need to look at all of Noises County, right? Okay. Dale, sorry for the interruption. Keep going, but just know that Chief Appraiser just walked in, and I don't know if he wants to make some comments about values going up, but he can in just a moment, as soon as you're finished.
All we're doing, we're, we're, we're setting a rate, showing as a proposed rate, and with the proposed rate, since it's seeing the effective rate, we will need to talk about doing the proper publication of notices, doing the proper hearings, and the proper date of when we adopt the rate. And since we're going above the effective rate, this will require a record vote.
Okay.
Each one individually showing whether for or against, and then, then we're going to determine the rate. If I go back to the calendar that we provide you several months ago, I don't know if you have this available, but we've had some. but we've had some areas where we'll be publishing the notice of our proposed budget on the 20th. And then we're going to have two hearings at this moment. Right now, it's scheduled for August the 27th. And then we're going to schedule it for September the 1st, with adoption possibly on September 11th. However, we know that Commissioner Gonzalez will not be present on the 11th. So we need to determine, do we want to change these dates to fit the Commissioner not being present on the 11th? And we went through several items. We tried to go before the 11th. However, several of the commissioners will be in Austin for a conference, so we cannot be before the 11th. So it'll have to be after the 11th, which would be if I follow the direction of the county attorney, we have to have it on a Wednesday. So the first available date on a Wednesday would be the 18th.
So we wouldn't meet on the 11th and we would meet on the 18th?
Well, right now, we schedule a Commissioners Court meeting on the 11th. We can still do this, but Commissioner Gonzalez will not be present.
I get it. I'm happy to accommodate if we can.
We would just have a Commissioners meeting, but.
Or we could just have it on the 18th.
If it's special, we can either move the Commissioners Court from the 11th to the 18th or call a special meeting on the 18th just to address the budget and the rate.
I'm fine with just moving the 11th to the 18th unless someone has a problem with that.
I just want to triple check. I'm okay with that. I was told the 17th was a drop dead date. Was that incorrect?
I think there's a problem because the tax office is required by law to issue notices before specified time.
I think we need to make sure. What was the question, Commissioner?
Actually, the judge asked the question if there's, or no, with a, and Tyner said there might be a problem with deadlines for the tax assessor.
Well, that's why we had to try to schedule on the 11th, because if we do it the 11th, that gives the tax assessor the time to put the rates into their production schedule to be able to issue notices. We talked to them. They said the earliest, the latest they could possibly do it would be on the 16th if they, but according to the county attorney, we have to have it on a Wednesday.
And that's by statute, Lauda?
By statute. Now, as it was done before, and we've been talking with the tax assessor last year and this year, they can proceed with the proposed rates, creating bills. But if you all decide a different rate, then they have to reissue new rates and a cost for the postage. That's why we try to have it on the 11th. We can still do the 11th, but we'd be one member short.
And why, why couldn't we do it on the 16th? But what's the reason?
Do we not get a waiver from the government, the comptroller's office to do it on Monday?
The statute says at a regularly scheduled meeting, which is the court has designated Wednesday as a regular scheduled meeting.
Okay.
If you don't have a meeting in a week, but we can, we can do a special meeting on the 17th?
But a regular scheduled meeting is always on our normal?
I believe the law provides that the court must meet on the regular date designated by the court to meet, which is Wednesday.
Well, like they're saying, we could probably have a special meeting on another day other than Wednesday because the tax code tells us it has to be on a regular date. It has to be on Wednesday.
And the 28th of August is too soon to do it, right? I'm just looking back a week.
Well, we have to have, we have to have two public hearings. We have to public notices. We can, that would be really stretching the time because the tax, the code says that, you know, we have to have hearings after a certain number of time, that we have to file it within a certain time. Then the proposed can only be 11 to 14 days or three to, no, no, less than, no more, less than three days or more than 14 days after the second hearing. So there's a lot of time.
No, no, if you say we can't, just say we can't. I mean, I get it. I mean, if we can, we can. If we can't, we can't. I believe you. I just, I'm just asking, but yeah.
The 4th, I mean, you know, some of us will be traveling that day, but.
That's why I said the 4th, y'all would have a conference in Austin. And we try to do the best, but we want to make sure all the members are present.
Do it early in the morning, let everyone travel after that to Austin. I mean, it's really the only, unless, I mean, unless one of us is not going to be there, and I know that's important, because it may be a close vote or whatever, but.
Well, I'm just going to make a point. Y'all aren't going to like it, but I think when we have scheduled meetings, we should try and keep the scheduled meetings for the public. It's not about us. We knew this when we came in here and sometimes we're not here. You know, I didn't make the county, state of the county, because I had already made plans a year ago. We've had, John was out, Brenton was out, and nothing against you, Jag, but I'm saying if we have a meeting, it's about the citizens. We should keep to what we've got. So, none of us are indispensable. I know we all want to be here for these votes, but I'll go with whatever y'all want, but that's just my opinion.
I agree. I just worry because.
We can still keep it on 11th, but there would be, you'd be one member short.
The vote could be split and then what do we do? And no one will budge.
Stay all day.
That's what my worry is, because I agree. I mean, there are meetings that we're going to have to miss, but.
But the problem on the.
It'd end up being 2-2 and I would hate for us to be stuck there.
Well, and the problem on the 4th is, well, no, the problem on the 4th is, I mean, the conference starts, I need those hours. I mean, I've paid for them. I've got everything there. And I mean, if we get into a lengthy discussion, then we could be here all morning and not leave till noon, and then I'm going to miss four hours of that conference that I've got to have for my continuing education. I paid for. So I get it. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to go back to the 28th. I'm happy to go to the 18th. I'm happy to move things. I agree with Carolyn. I mean, I didn't ask, you know, I missed a meeting and sorry I missed it, but it was my bad. Something came up and I had to miss it, but I'm happy to try to change things. But I don't, I don't think doing it on the 4th is a good thing either, because I can't miss, I can't miss those hours.
Look at the budget the last couple of years.
I agree with you. No, no, I'm not disagreeing with you.
Either way, and I think that that could happen this year. And then we're going to need somebody to swing during that meeting and say, okay, I see, I see your side. So, I mean, if you already do that come September 11th, then we'll just have to do it on the 11th.
So the 11th is the actual adopting of the tax rate?
Right now, the budget calendar, that's what's, that's what's scheduled, yes.
And so the 28th is just impossible, right?
Let me look some scenarios and I got to work with the county attorney to just make sure we follow the right time limits and date codes. Because we have, we have to first have a public hearing, then the second hearing can only be a certain number of days before or after that. Then you have to file the proposed budget, then you have to have three to 14 days after the second hearing to handle that. And we had to try to see if we can fit in. Right now, I can't tell you if that's possible.
Yeah, I agree with John in principle, because if someone's not going to be here, I mean, I don't know how, I don't know how this is all going to go. I'm trying to digest it, but at the same time, it could be a four hour meeting. I mean, that alone could be a four hour, it could be 40 minutes, but it could be four hours and I mean.
Well, we could do a midnight meeting. I've done that before in one, well, I'm just saying if, if, you know.
Perconventing the law, though. I mean, isn't it, I mean, I'm not saying.
No, no, it's not. It's Wednesday.
That's not a regular scheduled time. You can't do it at midnight.
It's not, it's not a regular scheduled time. It's a regular scheduled day. It's a day. It's the day.
But who's going to come at midnight? What public member's going to?
Well, I don't know. I might bring pop.
Well, I can't, I know it's a good idea, but I mean, you can't, I don't want to do that to the public.
Look, I want to do, that's right. Look.
It's a good idea.
And in the past, I mean, what I think we need to do is look for options and solutions. And I'm going to ask you to bring those to us. Do you need to have the dates approved by the court today? Or is our real goal here today to do the tax rate?
On the genotam, it says that you have to take a record vote and authorize publication of appropriate notices. And we know the dates when we do the notices, so we know dates.
Okay.
Now, we can try to do some scenarios and I can work with the tax office and the county attorney and Tyner to do what would be the case if we have it on the 18th of September. Or if we go back, we can't do the 4th, but if we can try to do possibly, like you said, August the 28th, I can, I don't know if we can fit that in.
I don't think that there's enough time to do two postings and meet on the 28th. I just don't think it.
Tell me what you think of that.
Can possibly be done.
Yeah, you need two public hearings.
I mean.
Yeah, so I don't think.
You need two weeks for two hearings?
Fourth of the 18th, but they're going to be in conference. They're going to be in, they're not going to be, they're going to be in Austin. So with what we're giving is either it needs to be the 11th with knowing there will be one member short of the 18th.
Is there any way, is there any way that someone could ask Kevin to come in? We could really talk to him now. Thank you, Edward. Let me, let me, in the spirit of discussion, let's just hold for a moment. Ronnie, you and Don Causi are here. Ronnie Canales, I think maybe, I just wanted you to acknowledge that we have had some growth this year and I think it actually is reflected. I think, I don't know if, I know there was a request maybe to have a question for you. Has nothing to do with our tax rate. It just has to do with our values that are growing. You just, you're here and we'll be in lots of budget. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to sign you up. We signed him up. Yeah, I'll have to put tax office, but yes. And on the first page that we were provided, oops, not on this page. Yeah, the taxable value is $30.2 billion. And that's quite a bit of an uptick. I believe of 2, 2.3 billion perhaps? Is that my memory?
Were your numbers, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so anyway, I just.
Well, you know, in reference to Commissioner Vaughn, one of the reasons that I'm here is because of commish. But also, I'm happy to be here. Hadn't been here.
Good to see you. We're happy you're here. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Brian. The last time I had an invitation from you, I couldn't make it.
Yeah.
But today I can, so it's good. You know, we were discussing last night about where the county is going. And, you know, we're in a situation where there is a lot of growth, whether it be population or development or things like this. There's a lot of movement with development here in the county of Oasis. If you go to London ISD area, you're seeing that there's a lot of new construction there. Think I mentioned that to Commissioner last night. Also, the northwest area is also growing too. Different parts of the county, there's areas where it's a little bit, in a sense where it is growing, development wise and population too. Now, you do have a lot of industry, well, industry growth in San Patricio. But their problem is not going to be necessarily the industry that's there. It's going to be where do I live? So a lot of those people are going to be coming this way within the next three to five years. So that's where you're going to have another population growth. And that has a lot to do with where we're going. A lot of these developers are foreseeing this kind of growth in the future. Also too, you might be getting stagnated with the wind farms. There's certain areas now out there by Chapman Road where there's a lot of the wind farms. So you actually, as a developer, you can't go in there and start developing again, just like you do here within city limits. Same thing is happening with Bishop ISD. They're also going on to a new venture with wind farms as well. So what normally happens there is that it kind of stagnates.
Those are doing affordable housing in Bishop now?
Yes, they did. Yes, they did. And it's right off the, now you can say the expressway. You know, it's, it's, it's there. And they do have the affordable housing. But just let me, let me start by going back to the year 2017. And forgive me if I'm not that well-prepared today, but the fact is that this is on a short day. I just got off our board meeting at the appraisal district and we had some very good agenda items that we had to do today. Just, just to give you, for instance, the county in Oasis in the year 2017, we kind of basically certified them at, or you all at 4.47. Okay? That's on the 17th. On the year 2017, the year 2018, the county was still at 4, at 4.118. 19, this year, the county took a big leap. It doubled. It went to nine, 8.7% increase, which basically is pretty much, I'm sorry, it's at. Yeah, 8.5% increase from last year to this year. Okay? And that's because you have different categories of growth, whether it be commercial, industry, or what it is that we're doing. The city of Corpus has been basically pretty much at the 4% increase, year after year for the year 17, 18. And then for 19, they were, they just barely went to four this year.
Excuse me, Ronnie, you say it doubled from?
For the county, yes. Yes. See, a lot of it had to do with what happened last year. Port Aransas, city of Port Aransas, school district of Port Aransas, they are in double digits again today, like they haven't been in the past, in prior years. They're not completely refurbished or actually they hadn't been finished with all of the new construction that's in Port Aransas. We still have a lot of the major condominiums that are just now beginning to get refurbished or start from the ground up. There, we also foresee development in the golf course area there in La Palmera Golf Course there in Port Aransas. And those are expensive homes that are going to be going in there. That's Port Aransas. The island, of course, has a lot of major development in the future, the next three to five years. I think a lot of it has to do with the bridge. They're doing another bridge there in the island to expedite some of the things that they want to do there as well. So, there is a lot of growth, both population and development in the county of Oasis. So, you know, it's just, oil and gas is another issue. We mentioned that yesterday. Commissioner Vaughn was saying that, that she, you know, her deal is that the barrel, I think, is about $7 less than what it was a month or so ago, which is true. But when you look at your rural school districts, Awadulse, Banquete, Bishop, those are in double digits this year. Okay? Banquete is the one that's at 40% increase from one year to the other. That has to do with pipelines coming through there. Back in 2012, 2013, Driscoll ISD, Dr. Garcia, that's there, she had concerns because they were barely, not barely, they were in the negative for those two years. Because there were pipelines coming through there, but it was funny because it would go around this way, skip Driscoll. Now, it's coming right through there and that's where they're beginning, the last two years, they've been double digits as far as increases are concerned. Then we come into our favorite BFFs, that's refineries, Valero, Flint Hills, Citgo. And they've been consistent with, of course, that my property is not worth what it is, less than what it is. And we have a problem there. Okay? Today, we have, we have Valero at 1.3 billion. And I believe that Flint Hills is pretty much at 1.5, and that's taxable, taxable dollars that we're talking about. Now, they've sued us for the year 2018 and they're probably going to amend their lawsuit to the year 2019 as well. As of today, we have hired an outside law firm to come and take care of those issues with Valero Refinery. Okay? It's on a contingent basis and I think the firm itself is very good at what they do. They're very reputable in the state of Texas. Their home base is in San Antonio. Their, their local representative, that's Simon Purnell, he is from here, from Corpus. But the main office is in San Antonio, which correlates with the main office of Valero is in San Antonio. So, that's, that's where that's going. And just so you know, we approved that today. We had a meeting Friday with the city, school, Delmar and the county in reference to them making a presentation to those entities. The reason I say that is because those entities are the only ones that are actually responsible for the Valero lawsuit. If Flint Hills chooses to follow through with their lawsuits, then that's where Tolosum Midway comes in. But Flint Hills has taken the backseat to the fact that, want to see what's going to happen with Valero first before we do what you want to do. We're at a point with Flint Hills about when, was it two years ago, or was it last year, I think, that we settled with them, only because the school district, Tolosum Midway ISD, had, they were aggressive, is the proper word, I would say, in writing a resolution letter that was passed by the school board condemning the things that Flint Hills was doing. Not only did they write that letter and pass it as a resolution for the board, they also sent it to the Koch brothers. And they were not happy about that letter. Soon as they received that letter, within a week, that legal legal was in our office settling on the numbers, but without refunds. Okay? If it, if it has to take us to embarrass them, then that's what needs to get done. Hopefully, Valero understands that it can create problems for a city, for a school, for an entity as the county to where it can cause bankruptcy. And there are good, good stories of what they do. They provide monies to several of the entities that are here in town, and that's good. But at the end of the day, they're not paying their fair share. You, the homeowners, are going to be picking up the rest. And that's where you, setting the tax rates today, have to go up or come down. And most of the time, we have to go up to accommodate what we have to work with here and the county, in your budget.
Ronnie, I wouldn't.
Same thing with our budget at the appraisal district. Yes, sir.
I wasn't going to go there, but since you brought it up, there's a little different side of that story on Flint Hills. And they could have gone after refunds. They had every right to do so.
Yes.
But they had come to, several of us, including Judge Neal at the time, and said, before all that happened, just so you know, that the intent was to try to do exactly what they did. So I don't, I don't, I don't share the same, I don't share the same assessment in regards to, they were embarrassed and the Koch brothers did it and that's not how it all went down. So there's two sides to that story. And I thought we weren't going to talk about all that because you didn't want to come talk about all that, or I would have had Flint Hills to come tell their side of the story. So I would just ask you, if you want to talk about it. you want to talk about it, and you told me you didn't, and you told me you couldn't come talk about it.
Back then.
Yeah, and so, if you want to come talk, so I'm confused, because now you're talking about, I wasn't going to go all on that, but you're going on to that.
Well, I was just trying to tell you that Flint Hills.
No, I get it, but I would have invited Flint Hills to come talk about this.
Where, let me speak.
Well, I was trying to finish my train of thought when you interrupted me, to be fair, so if I'd have known that you were going to go into this, which I didn't, then we could have had Flint Hills and Valero come in, like I had wanted to do before, and nobody was wanting to do it, no, no, they did want to come, but the appraisal district said no, and I backed off, they said, no, it's attorney-client privilege, I didn't agree, but I backed off, I stopped talking about it, because they made it very clear they didn't want to come in and do it in a public venue, and now you're bringing it out in a public venue, and if I didn't know you were going to do that, I would have let Valero and Flint Hills come and make their side of the story, because every time you come and say what you say like that in public, then, you know, they hear it, they see it, they read it, and they don't feel like, well, how come we didn't get a chance to come do their side too? So, if we're going to do this, then let's let them come in and tell their side of the story, otherwise, just, yeah, I mean, just go in to do it, because there is another side to that story that, that.
Yeah, let me finish.
Right, so, you know, let's either talk about it or not talk about it.
I'm going to sign you up for public comment.
Well, no, we're on, it's an agenda item, I mean, we're on the agenda item, he's brought it up as part of the agenda.
No, no, he.
No, I just came here.
He, he signed up as public, it's fine, I'll do it right here.
And part of that history that you're referring to.
Wait, is this public comment, or is this part of the?
It was designated public comment, I don't know if you didn't hear it, but it was designated public comment.
My bad then, so.
That's all right.
No, no, I didn't know it was public.
Hey, let's, let's, uh, let's do this, just for, for the opportunity, and that is, is that, look, one of the things that I wanted to emphasize was that, or that I heard, and I think is excellent, so I'd like to bring us back home, is that we're growing, we're a county that's growing, and, and that's really what I think was really important about your comments, is that when you see four percent, and you see a doubling to eight percent, that's a really strong growth.
Right.
And I think she, he was, you know.
But you see it going higher than eight, Ronnie, or no, I mean?
We see, basically, and Don can probably attest to that too, that we're probably going to be in the same number next year, maybe a little bit less.
Two years from now, maybe?
From two years from now, then we're seeing a lot more, because, see, by that time, you're going to have the expansion of the port, so you're going to have more production with oil and gas, and going back to what Brent was saying, just so y'all know, when they came to our meeting to settle on the numbers, they also said they would not want to share how they arrive at their numbers publicly in Commissioners Court setting, and that was Scott, Scott is the one, not Mr., I forgot his name, Oswald, the PR guy, not him, it was Scott, the main guy who does all the legal work.
Judge, I mean, can I interrupt you, Laura, I think we're really getting off track here, I mean, we're getting into a public, I did not feel like this was public comment, I'm happy to put this on the, and I'm happy to see if everybody wants to come.
Here's, here's the most important thing, anybody is always welcome to come here and to talk about issues, the reason that it's germane is that we're talking about setting the tax rate, the tax rate.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, the tax rate is, is the, it, growth is relevant to your tax rate, period, given revenue caps, it's also relevant to understand where we're headed, no one has a crystal ball, you'll recall that, you know, we talk, and I'm back in my own discussion, Laura, with tax rates, you recall that Noe Inohosa, just a couple of days ago, in Budget Workshop, you know, he guesstimates three and a half percent growth, you know, this, these are just the conservative outlooks of a financial advisor, and then, of course, I think after three or four years, he puts us at one percent, again, why? Because when they're modeling, they want you to see in the light most favorable that it can be to you, but one of the interesting pieces of setting a tax rate is understanding where you are next year. So much of what we do, we like to be reactionary, I like to think of it as being more on offense, and I should go ahead and say, although I'm sorry he just left, but I'll repeat it if he needs to, is that it is my proposal, everybody, when, when you start this budget process, for those of you at home, the way it works is the auditor brings you a budget, a budget book, and it's very well put together. My first experience here at the Oasis County, I can tell you, we have a fine and strong auditor office, we may have driven them insane this past week, but there were tremendous demands, but no doubt, I was presented with a book that I could really get my hands around, it was well organized, and I was able to then make my changes, and my, and I was able to create questions, and be able to, if you will, create a counterproposal for a budget. When we do that back and forth, it's a very healthy environment, and then we bring in our commissioners in Budget Workshop, and we talk about those items, and then sometimes that influences. Where I'm getting to is that the tax rate is all a function of understanding all the relevant factors, growth is one of them, our tax assessed value is the most important thing for me, but I, if I just looked at a window that was narrow, I would not be doing a good job as your county judge, so I'm looking at this year and next year, and I thought if I gave it a little bit more air, he would come back in the room, but the point is, is that it is that this county judge's proposal, that we do stay at the tax rate that is proposed, and we will wait for him for the vote, but that is the county judge's proposal, I believe it is the most fiscally responsible thing to do, given our growth, and given what we know is coming next year with revenue caps, it is incumbent upon this county, knowing its budget challenges, knowing its capital improvement plan, that, those infrastructure challenges, when you put all three pieces of that puzzle together, you recognize that it is doing the taxpayer a great service to say, we'll stay steady, and we will be able to accomplish the needs of the county, and that would generate six point four million dollars if we stayed steady at our tax rate with the growth that the chief appraiser has, has given to us, and of course, it has all the bells and whistles of collection rates, and exemptions, and TERS, and abatements, right? So, we go through this process, and so for those folks at home, that's why all of this is relevant, and glad you're back, so we're going to go ahead and ask for Dale, do you have any further information to now give the court?
Yes, Your Honor, we worked with the.
Thank you, Ronnie.
We worked with the county attorney's office, and we can do a proposal to adopt the, the budget rate and have the Commissioners Court on the, on the twentieth of August. That would require that we publish the notification of our, our tax rates on the seventeenth, have our first public hearing on the proposed increase on the twentieth, have our second public hearing on the twenty-third, then I would be required to file the proposed budget on the twenty-seventh for inspection, and following with the county clerk, then we can meet on the twenty-eighth to adopt both the tax rate and the budget on the twenty-eighth.
Can you?
I did not write it down, but.
I didn't either, can you?
Certain that you are going to, Tyner, going to get that to us.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be publishing notice Friday, and.
Notice will be on the, on the seventeenth, which is actually required by the law to publish the, the proposed rates that we're proposing, that will be on, on the seventeenth, which is this Saturday. Given the requirements of the law, we can have our first public hearing on the twentieth of August, which is a Tuesday. Following the study to our notices, we can have our second published, public hearing, which is, which is no earlier than three days after the first hearing, and that could be on the twenty-third, which is a Friday. But then, I would then be required to file the proposed budget on the twenty-seventh, which is Tuesday, or if I have it earlier than the twenty-sixth, on Monday, but I can, I can do either of those days, if, hopefully, I have it ready by then. Once it's filed and published with the county clerk, we can meet on the twenty-eighth as part of the agenda item that's on the court, the Commissioners Court's already assessed, to adopt the tax rate, as well as adopt the budget on the twentieth of August.
When is the public?
You mean the twenty eighth of August?
Twenty eighth, yes.
So, Dale, I'm sorry, one more time, because I need to look in the calendar, the first one would be when?
First public hearing is on, on the twentieth, which is a Tuesday.
Okay, first one the twentieth, the second one when?
The twenty-third, which is on a Friday.
Okay, and then the twenty-eighth would be the?
Twenty-eighth is when we actually meet to, to discuss and propose the, the proposed budget, and as well as, and adopt the tax rate and the budget.
I'm good, that's, that works your range.
I mean, that's a regular meeting, correct, Tyner?
Yeah, yeah, the twenty-eighth is.
Yes, the twenty eighth.
Yes, yes, correct, it'll be both that day.
Then we would take off the other public hearings that we have and substitute.
These.
These two, for the twentieth, twenty-third, twenty-eighth, those would be the three days we'd.
The three meetings, yes.
That's correct.
I'm, that's fine with me.
That's correct.
I'm good. Is that okay, with everybody else?
Well, I just cross-checked, Maggie, I believe I'm all right.
Is that okay for you, Commissioner, that we just changed our world for?
Make sure we establish the proposed rate, as well as, as proposed the, the rates, and vote on the, on the dates that we've discussed.
And I'll probably be posting all those meetings this Friday, I would recommend.
Okay, all right, I'm going to call the question, and I'm going to take it, it'll be long, but it will encompass everything. As our county auditor has just relayed to us a new proposed schedule, I'd like a motion to approve August twentieth, August twenty-third is the first and second public hearing with the proposed budget with the public hearing to be included in our Wednesday regularly scheduled committee meeting, Commissioners Court meeting on August twenty-eighth. All of this being said, is for the proposed tax rate not to exceed, let me grab my notes, point three, one, three, zero, eight, eight, which represents the same tax rate as last year. Do I have a motion?
Judge, could I also ask that we start those meetings at nine o'clock, please?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
I'm going to add to the motion that those dates start at nine AM, do I have a motion? And a second, and a hearing, no further discussion, we now have a proposed tax rate, and we have published notice dates for the public.
For the tax rates, and so the effective rate, we have to take a record vote.
I'm so sorry, you said that earlier, and I forgot. Commissioner Chesney, for the clerk, do you vote for or against? It's a record vote.
That's for.
This is a.
For purposes of, purposes of ceiling, and not necessarily in support of.
That's correct, sir.
But I'm not going to symbolically vote against it, I'm just going to go, I'm going to go for it right now.
Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Vaughn, Commissioner Modis, County Judge Barbara Canales, yes, for. Okay, I think now we have some good dates, and I think that that is good work, thank you, team.
Just to work something up, because this is throwing me real hard into trying to get the filed proposed budget, can I request a Budget Workshop on the twenty-first?
Of August?
Yes.
I believe so, Dale, if you wouldn't just give me one moment.
But what would be that if we're doing something on the twentieth already? That's just a public hearing.
That's just a public hearing to discuss the tax rates and the increases that were required.
Right, but wouldn't we have the, no, no, but wouldn't we have discussions?
Well, I want to, I want to have the Wednesday, the next day, in case there are some changes that I need to address in the, in the items for the budget, so I want to make sure we're fine, the, a lot of stuff, because I just received some, several changes that the judges asked for, and we have several different discussions that we have on how we want to handle some payroll issues, that I need directions for before it gets in the proposed budget.
Okay, so, wait, wouldn't we, wouldn't we want to have that before a public hearing? Because.
Public hearing, the public hearing will be just to discuss the tax rate.
Tax rate, but anything else?
How the tax rate would, would be a, an increase above the effective rate, and the percentage of that increase, and let the public come in and discuss how they think it would be, and y'all discuss that, all it is, is just, if I'm not mistaken, Laura, is just to discuss what our proposed rate is, and the effect of that on, on the effective rate.
But why couldn't we do it, what you're needing on that meeting also?
Saying on that same day.
I would have to, could we?
Workshop, yeah.
That'd be fine, I have a workshop on that same day.
I love you, I don't need to keep coming, Audrey, the other day for fifteen, you know, I mean, yeah, so I'm just saying, why don't we do it at the same time?
That'd be fine.
What year are we doing it?
On the, on the twentieth.
Well, and I don't even know if we want to do this workshop, it might want to be an action item, so we can give you direction.
Well, I, I still need to have direction on how, because I, it's not, I don't, I don't prefer it to be a record vote, I want to have y'all's input of, of what I've been hearing from, from a few of us, to try to make sure how I want to incorporate everyone's input into the budget, to make sure how it fits, and the biggest issue is on, on personnel.
Right, and, and I owe you some time, you know, we still have this week to, to continue to get there, but, okay, so I think the will of the court then is to have something after the hearing on the twentieth, to.
A workshop.
All right.
Right after.
And I'm going to go ahead and hold another placeholder, just for you and I on the twenty-first, okay? After the HUD meeting, that is, I, Maggie.
So.
Okay, so.
When were the, the tax hearings, so we can say this, when were the other ones scheduled? Because we want to let people know we're canceling those and we're redoing them.
The other ones were scheduled, if I get the, the, the regular ones were scheduled for September the first, no, no, the first one was scheduled for August the twelfth.
Right, August twenty-seventh.
Second one was for September the first.
September the first, no.
No, 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 sorry, September the third, September the third.
Okay, so.
Yes.
So, August twenty-seventh and September third have now been replaced by August twentieth and August twenty-third.
Correct.
And.
And the hearing to adopt the, the budget was, was originally scheduled for the September the eleventh, and now will be August twenty-eighth.
Okay, so just so the public is aware, and Tim's here, and whoever's here, yeah, twentieth, twenty-third, and twenty-eighth is instead of twenty-seventh, third, and eleventh.
Correct.
And for the court's information, we will be putting the notice that's published in the Caller Times, that will be on our website, and it will be sent to the city of Corpus Christi to run on a continual basis on the public television channel.
That's great.
Just for clarification, you need to then re-address the one on September first, because if we're doing everything on twenty-eighth, then you can't publish the, like the officials, that has to be earlier.
Yeah, that's a Teresa thing, that was when she sent that email out, good point, because that was supposed to be published in the Caller Times on Sunday the first, so you're going to have to readdress that.
To readdress that, it had to be an earlier date.
Make sure you can do that, too.
Okay, again, thank you for everybody working together to get that.
That's ten days before the hearing, so it has to be ten days before the proposal, the twenty-eighth. So, that's our proposal, and that's how we, we address the issues, sir.
Okay, thank you, and.
And then, does that mean we're still meeting, do we still have a regular Commissioners Court?
Yes.
On the eleventh also, just aren't going to have the tax rate on it?
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct, that's, the schedule stays the same, and as long as we're talking about meetings, when we do get to that point, I want someone to flag me on the calendar, because I was, you know, it's been pointed out to me that all over the state, nobody does Wednesday meetings, counties have meetings on Tuesdays, and the reason is, is because we're constantly missing urban counties, you know, meetings, because they're always scheduled on Wednesdays, I don't know where we came up with Wednesday, but when I have surveyed other counties, they do it on Tuesdays, all across the state. We need to really look at that, that's, it's really important that I get to be at the urban counties, I want to be at the urban counties, I want our voice to be heard, I'm, I am a major, you know, lover of policy, this is where policy is being made, if we want to have a real effective legislative session in 2021, I need to be at all urban counties that I can be at in 2020, it's a real problem, I, you know, I, and again, I can't explain why, Tyner, you might have more history here, but Tuesdays are, are the right day to have.
It's been Wednesday since I've been here.
The beginning.
Twenty-seven years.
No.
Since Judge Barnes.
Yeah.
Judge Barnes.
We may want to.
The story I heard about that was because city council was on Tuesday.
Right, right, that was.
That's what I.
Well, you know, and, and none of us go to city council, and if we do, we can make those adjustments, you know.
Or maybe we can switch it to Monday or Thursday, I mean, we can look at other.
All I know is that urban, our voice needs to be strong at urban counties, and I'm feeling very neglectful, because I cannot be there. Okay, thank you, I believe now we have concluded that piece of the agenda, which is our regular agenda, and we have one budget change order from the auditor, and I'm going to turn to our book, so that we can address that.
Yes, Your Honor, we are providing a budget change order number twenty for our current fiscal year, there's only two departments requesting the, any additional changes in their budget, the county attorneys needed some additional office expense, because their, their CPS expenses have gotten a lot higher than they originally projected, so that, that's understandable, since we're trying to see more CPS cases, so they have the funds available for that. Forty-one twenty is where we'd have our aid for those that they need assistance for, either utilities or rent, and those change every year, because there's no way to identify exactly how many participants we're going to have to have, so with that particular issue, we're asking to move a little bit of money for kitchen, as well as other services, to try to accommodate the social services. With that, I present budget change order number twenty.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post him, sign. Okay, it's time, with no other items on our agenda, that I give public notice that the Commissioners Court may elect, in fact does, to go into executive session to discuss matters listed on the agenda, then authorized by the Open Meetings Act, which is chapter five, five, one, and the. to discuss matters listed on the agenda, then authorized by the Open Meetings Act, which is Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. The, um, in accordance with the Government Code, Sections 551, 071, 072, 073, 074, 745, 076, 086, and 087, we elect to go into executive session to consult with our attorney, including, um, to consult with our attorney on matters relating to litigation, real property, prospective gifts, personal matters, including termination, county advisory boards, security devices, economic development, negotiations, and any other matters that may be discussed in executive session. Upon completion of executive session, we will come back into open session and take any action as deemed appropriate on items discussed in executive session. I'm gabbling this out at 11:35 AM. Okay, we're back on the record, and it's 12:15. And we have come out of executive session. And I have, for the clerk, I have these here for you. And also, if someone could allow me to borrow the executive session agenda, I'd appreciate it. I left mine in the room. Thank you so much. So, in the first matter, um, do I hear, um, a motion on the property damage claim of Judith Willis to settle? Do you want me to say the amount? To settle in the amount of $260. Is there a motion? And a second, please. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, we're instructing you to settle that property claim as the county attorney. The second item was to discuss and consider the settlement of Jose Martinez's lost property claim. And I'm looking for a motion to settle this claim and direct the county attorney to do so for $100. And I heard a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Item number, uh, or letter C is regarding the E-CIVIS allocation cost contract. And do I have a motion to instruct the county attorney to execute such contract? I'm sorry, what do you want?
It's actually for court approval.
I think it was already on there. Let me see.
Oh, yeah, it was. I'll move.
Yeah, there's no-
4A4.
I'm sorry. It's on 4A4. We have to go back, because we tabled it for exec, or we, we, okay, you're right. So, that's regular agenda item for the clerk, 4A4. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the master service agreement. And I got a motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Okay? And, uh, and then, uh-
No action.
No action is needed on, on item number D. And, um-
We don't table that for the next time?
Well, yes, she'll bring it back.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I don't really know. It needs a table, then, right? We'll just place it on the agenda and post it. Okay? And I'll get with the court manager on that. I'll get with you on that. It's an agenda item that will need to be placed for, uh, August 20th. Well, we can post it as a-
Action item?
An action item, please. Okay? And now it's time for adjournments and memory of, and I'll ask Commissioner Chesney, Commissioner Gonzalez.
I have one. Paula Lopez Rendon Berlanga passed away on Sunday, August 11th, 2019, mother-in-law of Juan Pimentel, our public works director. Rosemary said at 7:00 PM on Thursday, August 15th, at Ramon Funeral Home. Funeral mass will be on 1:00 PM on Friday, August 16th, St. Anthony's Catholic Church in Robstown, with burial following at Memorial Park Cemetery in Robstown. Our condolences and prayer to the Pimentel family and the Berlanga family.
Thank you. Commissioner Mattis?
Yes, uh, thank you, Judge. So, um, yes, also to the Berlanga family, Pimentel family, on the passing of Juan's mother-in-law. Of course, condolences to his wife. Manuel Lopez Jr., um, from Robstown. He passed away just this past weekend. He was former city councilman and mayor in Robstown in the 90s, and his mother was a Mattis. And so, we're cousins, or closer, I guess, cousins through my grandfather than through me, and I guess it's a couple removed through, to me, but still family. And so, we were sad of his passing and thanking for his, his service to the community and to, for the life he lived. Hal Suter, um, passed away before meeting last week, and I didn't get a chance. We just, we're so busy, didn't even think to, to recognize his life and all that he's done. He had been in hospice, I heard that just recently, within two weeks, and then got the news that he had passed. So, truly sad. Uh, Hal lives there in the neighborhood that we live in. So, we got to see him pretty often at neighborhood meetings and other things that we had going on. But truly a good man, uh, just, uh, passionate about the environment in our community. And he just did so much to bring people's awareness to taking care of, of our resources. So, uh, he will truly be missed, a good, good friend and supporter. And so, um, I am personally sad in his, his passing. And then finally, my Uncle Robert. My Aunt Debbie passed away last September. My dad's, one of my dad's sisters. And so, my uncle had been battling cancer ever since. And so, he, he was ready to go see my aunt, his wife. So, he, he was ready to go home. And so, he, uh, he did that this weekend. So, I'm mourn for my, my family, obviously, my dad, my grandfather, but especially my cousins and their children that were very close to him. And then having lost two parents within a year has been really tough for them. But it was a celebration of life yesterday at, uh, Holy Family Catholic Church, and it was just a beautiful ceremony put on. So, um, we're sad, but, you know, we're, we're blessed at the time that we had with him, so.
What was his last?
Signs, Robert signs.
And with that, I just want to echo our condolences on behalf of Neoces County to all those that were mentioned, and particularly mine for Juan and Yvette, Yvette's mom, and we send our prayers for them. Thank you all very much for a very good court. It's 12:22, and I will adjourn.